Item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation and my home, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is Deschutes County Justice Reinvestment Formula Grant Application. And item number two is the Supplement Grant Application. So I think we'll kind of be doing two together here. Yeah, so Trevor Stevens may be, yep, no rush, and Tanner Work may be joining us. So the Local Public Safety Coordinating Council, I think Tom Anderson is on that and myself. I wasn't able to join this last meeting, but I did, I was involved with the Formula Grant Committee. So I saw it before the public safety coordinating, you know, helped make that decision in presentation to the committee.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. So my name is Trevor Stevens and I'm a management analyst for Adult Pro and Probation. And I'm here today with Deputy Director Tanner Work, and we are seeking your consideration and approval for board's signature on a letter of support for the 2123 Justice Reinvestment Formula Grant. The grant has already been factored into our approved budget for FY22 and will not require a budget adjustment. So just some background on the Justice Reinvestment Grant. House Bill 3194 was passed by the Oregon Legislature as a means to control ever-increasing prison growth and by investing in local criminal justice systems. The goal here being not to have to build more prisons throughout Oregon. The funding started in the 1315 biennium, and the Oregon Legislature has continued to fund this program since that grant program has started. Deschutes County, through collaboration with our local lipstick agencies, has applied for received grant funds every application cycle, and we are currently applying for formula funds through the 2123 biennium. Now, the grant this year consists of both fourth formula grant, which is kind of based on our criminal justice population. And then there's also a competitive part of this grant as well that's considered the supplemental part, and that focuses more on the downward departures and the safe prison utilization reduction. So I will be presenting an overview of the formula grant in Part One for this agenda item, and then Part Two, Agenda Item. Mary Anderson from the DA's office will present about the supplemental grant. So the major goals of Justice Reinvestment, the grant and just the legislature itself, were safe prison reduction, reduction of recidivism, both of these in combination while holding prison, while holding offenders accountable and while also promoting public safety in our communities. Now, funding for the formula grant will be used for adult pro and probation to sustain and continue to improve upon their prison, our prison reduction and recidivism reduction programs. We refer to this as our Deschutes County Justice Reinvestment Program, and it's designed for clients who received downward departure sentences in lieu of prison or those who are released from prison early, usually on a short-term transitional leave or on an alternative to incarceration program. The JRP program aims to safely and effectively supervise clients in a community-based setting. What we do is we assess them, we do supervision based on their criminogenic risk and needs, and we match up services and supervision based on those specific needs of those individuals. Now, this includes just case management that really has an emphasis on structured skill building. Evidence-based practices have shown that structured skill building is what works best with this population, and therefore we utilize that when we do our structured office visits. We also team this up with cognitive-based interventions such as moral reclamation therapy and moving on, as well as other treatment and housing needs. A lot of these resources are used to find transitional housing or case-managed housing for these individuals to help them transition into more permanent housing in the future. Some of the results from the previous couple of years, we are seeing a reduction of prison utilization for Deschutes County of roughly 47%. Now, we know COVID-19 has had some impact on these numbers as well, but we did reference these numbers previous to that, and there was still quite a big decrease comparative to our rolling average baseline is what the Criminal Justice Commission uses to measure this mark. We also have seen slight reductions in recidivism, but recidivism for the Justice Reinvestment is measured in three-year cycles, and so we are just starting to hit that point where we will have individuals that actually went through this program, who will have three years out from this program that we can start measuring those against. So this program has been in full operation since September of 2016, and we are, for the formula grant, the grant is slated for Deschutes County at $1,743,505. And so this, as I mentioned, is already accounted for in our budget, and it does not include any new FTE for the formula grant. Now, as part of the Justice Reinvestment Grant, 10% of the funds get utilized for local victim service agencies. And as Commissioner Bowen mentioned, he was part of the original process for selecting those agencies. The Criminal Justice Commission allows the local public safety councils to select those agencies which will receive those awards. And for this grant cycle, when we submit our application, we have four agencies that we have selected through the local lipstick to put forward with our application. That is CASA, Kid Center, Mary's Place, and J Bar J. And Tanner and I are available to answer any questions that you may have, and I thank you for your time.
Great. So this is item number one, the Justice Reinvestment Formula Grant Application. We're going to separate this into two parts here. And thank you for that presentation. Any questions? Thoughts?
I guess, Trevor, thank you for that great overview summary and for this write-up overview summary. I am, I'm trying to unabstract this. This is, you know, there's a lot of summary information about kind of what is happening here, but could you give me a sense of how using these funds, you touch, touch these, you know, touch these offenders' lives, you know, engage with them and kind of, like, what really specific things do you do with these people that helps to, you know, helps keep them on track so that they, you know, so they are, you know, safe and, you know, following, following the law and doing that despite the fact that we're not sending them to prison?
Yes, so I can, first, what happens actually, like generally, is we do an assessment for these individuals. So all of these individuals will first receive a risk and needs assessment. And what that assessment does is it looks at the offender's likelihood of recidivizing or committing another crime. And so then, based on those needs, we match that person up with targeted supervision and services. So from there, they will be supervised by a PO, and then we look to see now, do they have any drug or alcohol treatment that is necessary? Do they need housing? Do they need DMV ID because they need to go in and get their driver's license so they can go back to work? So we match and target all of those services, and luckily, this grant provides funding that we can actually pay for those specific services. In general, we can a lot of times help someone with rent or whatever, but with this program, we can do like six months of housing, or we can really target those specific services for these individuals. And many of these individuals are high-risk, high-needs, so you can kind of think of it as wraparound services. So they're, we are providing all of that to this individual and trying to help them along their process to be successful on supervision. And I'm sure Tanner can provide some more details exactly with what the POs specifically do for those individuals.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. So essentially, they also add an intensive supervision program to the downward departure population that's on the JRP caseload. So they're seeing these individuals more frequently. And so if you look at this process as people coming in from the front door, which is the downward departure population that were prison-bound, but they get a probation sentence and were going to prison, and then the other back door of that population are those individuals coming out on short-term transitional leave up to 120 days early. And so the POs are seeing them much more frequently, and as Trevor mentioned, the defendant assessment report on the front end, it's a, it's the most extensive assessment report that we offer to our population, which looks at the whole spectrum of the individuals. So, and making a recommendation to the district attorney's office and the courts to, before sentencing. So that's what's different than a traditional probation case, like that's been on probation, and we see them based off a high or medium supervision level, which would be either twice a month or once a month, depending on that supervision level, where the JRP is weekly. Does that answer the question, Commissioner?
It does, yeah, thank you. That, it's, yeah, I was just trying, I was really trying to grasp, like, what's happening at the human level in all this work, and that was very helpful. Thank you.
Well, this is the second biennium of this effort and these dollars. Is that correct? The second, about three years into it, or the third year or something?
It's actually, it started in 2013, they keep enhancing.
Okay, so there's a big step a couple of years ago that I'm envisioning then, okay.
Correct. The first, the first rollout was, will the county participate in the program? That's as simple as it, now we're exactly to where we are right now in what you're reviewing before you, which is a multi-page document with several metrics and many more programs.
But I was just getting to the concept that the metrics are getting more mature, as in we, you can see a trend in a cost and effect and a return on investment, you know, so the numbers are getting, have been utilized over a few biennium. Now, that's exactly what I was thinking. Okay.
I actually wanted to say that on Thursday morning, I toured Deer Ridge, the empty part of Deer Ridge in Jefferson County, which apparently the prison there has never been completely full. They've moved them from one side to the other. But talking to people that work there, 60% of the minimum security inmates, they have a population today, I believe around 780, are, have, they deal with mental illness with those. So what do you do when you have someone who is in this system and they're mentally ill? I just was wondering.
For, in light of the JRP program, we would assess them, they may not stay on the JRP caseload, they would possibly, most likely go to the mental health caseload. And that PO works in close concert with, Deschutes County, their own health. So they have to have a certain diagnosis to make it onto that caseload, but if not, then the jail will work them on schedule. You know, some of the basics and just making sure all the services that they need are being provided. So it's kind of an ongoing process too, I would say, you know, that first visit doesn't tell us everything. So as the PO continues to walk down that path with that individual, they're constantly making adjustments to the case management there.
Okay, so then they, those people wouldn't be part of this program then? That's...
Well, they could, from the prison, they would, from on a short-term transitional leave, and if it was approved and they had appropriate address, technically, they would. They'd be, anybody coming out on JRP on the back end is going to a, these other caselots who are also doing the case management, but they may not be seeing them as frequently of the day. Depends on, you know, their needs. The individuals coming on, on the downward departure side are getting intensive services.
And even if this person qualifies as a JRP individual, we can utilize, and they get moved to one of our, our mental health caseload, we can still utilize JRI resources to help pay for things like they would as if they were on the JRP program, so.
Okay, thank you, Trevor. Thanks, Tanner.
So is there a motion?
Do we want to do, do this one and then the next one, or do them together?
Oh, let's do them separately, yeah, because there's, yeah.
So I move approval of the Deschutes County Justice Reinvestment Supplement, oh, excuse me, Formula Grant Application, 21 to 23 biennium for Deschutes County.
I'll second.
And that'll be Chair signature?
Yes, sorry, Chair signature.
Yep, okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Thank you very much. Quite a process to get here, but thank you for the background on that. So item number two is the Justice Reinvestment Supplemental Grant Application. Is Mary going to kick this one off? Thank you for joining us. Yeah, I see, we see you video, and then it's on mute.
Still on mute.
Yeah. There we go.
That was at my end. Good afternoon, Commissioners. We're here today to present on the second half of the two-part of the Justice Reinvestment Program Grant Signature. And the questions that you have raised so far, I think, really address the fact that both aspects of this grant application are really important. So Tanner Work and Trevor Stevens have just outlined for you the post-adjudication resources and focus. And what we are going to talk a little bit is the pre-adjudication or pre-trial focus of this grant application under the supplemental grant. And Commissioner Adair's question about mental health issues was a perfect lead-in to this, so thank you very much for that question. The difference between the supplemental grant and the formula grant application is, the focus of the supplemental grant is really looking at pre-trial supervision in lieu of pre-trial detention. And the reason that this is important, as you may be aware, but just by way of history, these funds under the Criminal Justice Commission Grant Fund Application Process are available as a response to really what we saw between the years 2000 and 2010, where we saw a 50% increase in our prison incarceration rate during that 10-year period. And since then, with these funds available, with the work that has been done in Deschutes County and the results that Tanner and Trevor have described, we have also been looking at other ways that we can address prison usage and pre-trial detention bed usage. The pre-trial focus really comes from a body of work, including a report by the Criminal Justice Policy Research Institute that focused on the effect of pre-trial detention in Oregon. And we know that there is a correlation between the likelihood of a prison sentence, the length of a prison sentence, and pre-trial detention. So this grant focused last biennium really on creating a safe way to release people into the community. And community safety has always been a focus on that, a focus of this program. And also to make sure that we had people appearing in court, because one of the reasons people are detained sometimes pre-trial is to ensure that they show up for their court dates. So working with community justice, the courts, the sheriff's office, and the district attorney's office, we started with a supplemental grant program, which included the pre-trial supervision deputy, who has been JT Combs, working to identify offenders who could be eligible for release from custody, thereby reducing costs to the county and also increasing the likelihood of the individual not going to prison by being supervised out of custody pre-trial. What happened is that we encountered unexpectedly the effects of the pandemic during our initial trial period. So with changes to some of the security schedules and bail schedules that were set in response to the pandemic plan, we actually had lower numbers than we anticipated for the first grant cycle, but we still had results that were measurable. And with the release and the supervision by Deputy Combs, we had 100% safety rate. So that means the percentage of defendants who were on release with pre-trial supervision, the percentage that did not commit a crime while on release. So we were successful with 100% of the people on pre-trial supervision did not commit a crime. Now, the numbers are low because of the impact of the pandemic, but that was an important start for us as far as seeing that this program could really be successful if it was expanded in the future. We also had a 94% appearance rate, meaning that defendants who were on release pre-trial were also making their court appearances, which was really important. So the grant application before you really focuses on that kind of entry into the criminal justice system, and the formula grant really focuses on as the person is exiting the adjudication process and transitioning towards supervision. What is different this year with the grant application is that we have, in addition to the pre-trial supervision deputy position with the sheriff's office and the management analyst, we've also reduced the deputy DA's involvement to .5 FTE. And the reason for that is the majority of the work that was done upfront to create the systems and processes, that work has been done, and to operate efficiently, we think that that position should be funded at the grant level of .5. The most exciting change from my perspective, although the entire application is exciting, is that we are including some reserved aid and assist evaluation slots, so that if we have individuals with significant mental health issues who may not be able to aid and assist in their own defense and to meet the statutory criteria, rather than identifying that issue and waiting for the process of securing an evaluation, which is typically a multi-week process, we would have slots available on a weekly basis so that we can expedite that. Fiscally, it is a incredible savings. This program, this method has been done in other counties, and it reduces pre-trial incarceration days while we're waiting for evaluations to occur. I think just from a human perspective, knowing that someone has a significant issue, we can address that sooner rather than having them wait in the jail. So that is also part of the request. We have been working with a research team, really focusing on making sure that we have data to evaluate and that we're making choices based on the evidence of the collection of that data and not just making subjective decisions about what programs are working and not working. So that is included as well. So that's my overview, but I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them. You have the documentation as far as the amounts in the position, so I won't read those to you, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mary, I do have a question. I know a couple of years ago, it's Commissioner Adair, we had, I believe it was 11 murder cases in Deschutes County. What's our count today? Do you know?
Commissioner Adair, you are correct. We did have 11 homicide cases pending, which covered everything from manslaughter to murder. I can give you a number, I want it to be accurate, so if you would allow me to email you or confirm that data and get back to you, I just don't trust myself to speak off the top of my head.
No, I, I know, I was just wondering, because, you know, you're talking about, okay, so crime is getting lower here, but what, you know, what we see coming out of Portland is definitely gone the other way. So I just was wondering, you know, the 11 homicides a couple of years ago was extremely unusual, and I'm just wondering where we're at today. So if you could send that, that would be lovely. Or not lovely, but it would be factual.
Yes, I will send that to you to ensure that it's accurate, and I agree with you that we are definitely seeing some changes. I think your questions focusing on the intersection between mental health and the criminal justice system, those are important questions that I'm glad that the board is asking, because we really need to focus on separating those and being able to address mental health issues early and not using the jail or the criminal justice system as a method of addressing mental health and mental illness.
It was, it was shocking to know that, you know, 60% of those in that minimum security are mental, you know, typed mentally ill, so, yes.
Well, and Mary, thank you for explaining, this is the pre-trial focus, and also learning about, you know, jail time opposed to prison time and the process as somebody is pre-trial. So that, I mean, that's a very, just a valuable context to understand that this can even reduce, you know, those prison bed days for the county and for, you know, any jurisdiction. Good investment.
I agree.
I'd love, I'd love to just ask a little bit more about that. I'm, I'm going through my head again, trying to, trying to understand what the human, human story, human level story is that's happening. Can you kind of help me understand how someone is, you know, they're arrested, and then if they're pre-trial, if they are detained pre-trial versus not detained pre-trial, how that, how that results in a higher likelihood of being sentenced to prison and a longer prison term or a longer sentence term?
That's a great question, Commissioner Chang. The report itself, that I think is the most helpful because it analyzes the issue in Oregon, is 26 pages long, and I'd be happy to send that to you. But to kind of summarize for you, historically, Oregon has relied on the primary and secondary release criteria, which are based in statute and really focus on the likelihood of the offender reoffending, whether or not there's a victim or community safety issue, and then ties to the community and those types of resources. We have a uniform bail schedule, and that uniform bail schedule was modified during the pandemic to reduce the number of people that were in custody for certain types of misdemeanor and other non-violent offenses and low-level felonies. Prior to that occurring, so that was unexpected and due to the pandemic and just balancing, you know, the health and safety issues with keeping people in custody for offenses, that was a change in a departure from what the bail had, schedule had previously been, and I think it was the sheriff's office and the jail being proactive about that safety issue with, working with the court. So, kind of stepping back on, on the human aspect of this, there's three levels of release. There's release on your own recognizance, which means you're released with no conditions. There's conditional release, which conditions are provided, like, don't use controlled substances, don't go to a certain address, you know, have a curfew. Those are conditions a person is supposed to follow. And then there may also be security release with, where a certain amount of money is required to be posted. And the idea of posting security is that it is an incentive for someone to follow the, the, the conditions of the court, the conditions of release. And so when we have individuals that have a history of committing crime persistently, have previously not followed the conditions of the court, maybe have not complied with conditions of probation and had probation violations, and they have committed crimes where they would be prison-eligible, generally applying that primary and secondary release criteria, they would be held. So what this program really focused on is, is there something else that we could do so we're not using a jail bed to hold someone pre-trial, to ensure community safety so we don't have crimes committed and that the person will follow the conditions of release, and also ensure that they appear in court? And this is really where we focus on the pre-trial supervision deputy. This is not available for other offenses yet. It has the potential to be expanded to other types of crimes in Deschutes County if there was funding for it. I think this, I don't want to speak for the sheriff's office, but they've expressed interest in evaluating that. And what that does is it allows the pre-trial supervision deputy to check in on the individual, to require check-ins, to monitor if they're complying with no alcohol conditions, to make sure that they have the proper means to make court appearances. What we know is when someone isn't in custody, if there's a potential for a resolution, it gives them more time and opportunity to consider those other potential resolutions. So that final summary report from Portland State University, just really focusing on the pre-trial detention, looked at Oregon as a whole and found, you know, looking at the statistics that were gathered, that there was a correlation between pre-trial detention and the likelihood of a prison sentence and going to prison. What common sense tells us is that, yeah, that's probably true, because if you're held pre-trial, you probably have the history and the factors that we would consider that would result in a prison sentence. But the pre-trial supervision in conjunction with the work that Tanner and Trevor just described, really gives us two opportunities to look at if there's alternatives to incarceration. So I hope that answers your question. That was my best attempt to summarize 26 pages of an official report.
Got it. So if I'm following you correctly, it's not that the pre-trial detention does... So if I'm following you correctly, it's not that the pre-trial detention does something to people or brings something out in them that makes them more likely to be sentenced. It's just that not, not have, not being in pre-trial detention allows them to explore these other possible outcomes and kind of helped, helped to divert themselves from that, that, from the sentencing. Is that, is that?
I think that's one of the conclusions, you know, that could be drawn. The report really looks at a number of different factors. There's no one explanation that really, you know, pinpoints what, you know, the direct relationship is. It's just statistically, it was something that could not be ignored. And so objectively, it requires us to look at, you know, how are we making decisions about release? And another component to the supplemental grant is the use of an objective tool called the VPRE. And with this group of offenders, we've been using the VPRE to determine if they're appropriate for release. So that's one aspect of it where we go to a more objective standard in some of, instead of just looking at, you know, a subjective argument about whether or not they're a good candidate for release, we're in the process of validating that tool for Deschutes County. So the pre-trial supervision deputy has the opportunity to meet with offenders and to administer the VPRE and make a recommendation to the court based on those results. The court is legally obligated to follow the primary and secondary release criteria, but it gives them more information, and Deputy Combs as the pre-trial supervision deputy gives them another option for ensuring community safety, victim protection, community protection, and making sure that the individual returns to court. So I think that we would be in a great place if we could identify specifically the correlation, but there's generally some trends and some indications of what that relationship might be.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so this is the supplemental grant, and lots of great information here today. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve Board Chair's signature on a letter of support for the local public safety coordinating council's approved Deschutes County Justice Reinvestment Program for the supplemental grant.
And I second that.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Thank you. Thank you for joining us, everyone.
Thanks for your great work.
Thank you. Have a good day.
At this time, item number three, American Rescue Plan Funding Update. The topic of the day, the Neighbor Impact.
Good afternoon. For the record, Greg Munn, County Treasurer and Chief Financial Officer. So this is one of our recurring American Rescue Plan Act agenda items, ARPA for short. And based on requests from the commission, a couple of weeks ago, we're bringing presentations to you for further information and funding considerations. So today, we have our partners and colleagues from Neighbor Impact here to talk about the Food Warehouse Program. So I'm going to introduce Scott, and he'll come up here with his staff, and we have a couple of folks online as well. And then after Scott's done, Dan and I will come back up and facilitate the rest of the agenda item.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you, Commissioners. Sharon, could I ask you to admit Suzette Chapman, who's online, who's our Development Director? Be all right, Mr. Chair? I want to introduce you to a couple of my staff people who are with us. We've got Carly Sanders, who is the Director of the Food Bank, and we have Patty Wilson, who is the Deputy Executive Director that oversees all Neighbor Impact programs. Suzette Chapman is also on the line, who is the Director of Development for Neighbor Impact. As we go into this, I want to say thank you, first of all, to all of you, because we have been engaging with all of you individually and collectively since March of 2020 in ways that I think none of us ever anticipated we would have to do around everything from how are we going to keep this flowing? What are we going to do about emergency management? What are we going to do about trying to deal with just, you know, the space to put everything? And you've been absolutely wonderful in your individual capacities in helping us make sure that we were able to do that. I want to flashback for a minute to 2020, February 2020 precisely, when we were having conversations, leisurely conversations within our organization about the fact that we were going to have to start doing something about the food bank. It was getting crowded. We were having too many partners, and we were trying to figure out how we were going to move money through it. We also were having big conversations about how could we better engage schools, because we thought schools were the next logical place for us to focus our distribution network, because kids are in schools and kids are hungry and kids need food, so that seemed like a good logical thing. I wish that were all we were talking about today, because a month after we were having those conversations, thinking we had quite a bit of runway on this issue, we were serving 54% more people than we had served previously. Pre-pandemic, we were serving about 20,000 to 22,000 people a month. Post-pandemic, we were serving 32,000 to 34,000 people a month. And we weren't just delivering food to our 58 partners around the region who would redistribute it. We were literally having people drive up to our warehouse, and we were loading boxes in the back of their cars on selected days. Our mobile pantry was on the road. Our partners, those of whom had enough volunteer support to be able to operate, were doing double duty in terms of lifting things. We had gone from one semi a week to two to three semis a week of food that was coming in and going out. So it was quite a ride for us in terms of how all of this works. I want to emphasize that we do not do this work alone. We are Tri-County Food Bank. We are one of 21 food banks in the state. We are heavily dependent upon our partners at Oregon Food Bank and in Feeding America in trying to do this work and delivering the commodities that come through, and we are so grateful for the 50, right, currently it's 55 partners that we have who are the everyday hands that actually take the food out of the truck, come to Redmond and get the food, and then redistribute it to the people on the ground. Many of, about a third of those are faith-based groups. Many of them are elderly volunteers who are particularly vulnerable to COVID. So they took some, some pretty amazing risks in an uncompensated way in order to make sure that their friends and neighbors got fed. Our food bank is currently distributing about 4.6 million pounds of food a year. We get the food from three sources. We get food from the, the local community groceries. We have one of the highest collection rates of any of the food banks in the state. We're very proud of that. We also get food that we buy for pennies on the pound directly from Oregon Food Bank, and we get federal commodities that are shipped through. Commodities go up and down depending on what pandemic looks like and, you know, who has bird flu this month or whatever is causing the commodities to shift. So that's quite a bit of food that comes through, and that translates to 5.75 million meals a year that we serve. Now, those numbers are as of June 30th. Obviously, that only included two months of the pandemic, so I suspect our numbers are going to be quite a bit higher this year because we're going to pick up the whole pandemic effect when we calculate them at the end of the year. About 40, 48% of our recipients are children. They come with adults, obviously. They don't get food directly themselves, though some do directly get fed out of the program. But children are overwhelmingly the number of the group that we serve. And then you could add in seniors and the disabled population, and you're talking about the large majority of the folks we're serving are not working age adults. There is some supplement of household income. SNAP, if you're low-income, will buy you about three weeks of food during any given year, and since somehow you have to cover that extra week, so that's where we help out. You may have seen the big hullabaloo put out by the administration last week, that SNAP benefits are going to be increased for the first time in years. Well, that's fine, and that's a welcome change. However, the pandemic benefit is about to go away. So there, some people are going to end up net negative and some are going to end up about net zero after that all rolls through. So we don't anticipate not needing food anytime soon. Our current warehouse is about 2,200 square feet. It was built in 1991. It is the smallest warehouse in the state, and it has a, we have the dubious honor of putting more pounds of food per square foot through the warehouse than any other warehouse in the state. That's a testament to efficiency. Most food that comes into our warehouse doesn't stay in the warehouse more than 24 hours before it's back out on the road again. Sometimes we'll get caught up with a surprise burst or, or a slowdown in traffic or something, but mostly it's coming in and it's going right back out again. And that's, that's how we've been able to continue to operate with a smaller warehouse because we are just so efficient. And we've only got, by the way, six people operating in that warehouse right now. So we're trying to feed, you know, 55, it's as if we were a giant wholesale house trying to feed 55 grocery stores, and we're trying to do it on six people, if you can imagine. So we've reached the point where we can no longer do that. We are now having to not order food sometimes because we simply have nowhere to put it because of the demand that we're getting and the amount that we need. So, you know, we, right now, we can manage that a little bit with timing, and when better weather, we can store some food outdoors, but we are not, if it's not perishable. But we're not going to be able long-term to do that. We can see that. We thought we had a five-year runway to raise the money for a new warehouse. I don't think we're going to make it five years unless something dramatically changes in the near future. One of the things we learned during pandemic is how important we are to the emergency response system. Now, we had already been talking about that theoretically, but I don't think we had really grasped it until we experienced it during COVID. If the COVID numbers are any indication of what might hit us, then I can't imagine what Cascadia would do to us. It would absolutely kill us in terms of capacity using the existing facilities that we have. So I think that's something that we have to worry about and think about going ahead, and it's wanting, making us want to accelerate the construction of our warehouse. We've identified a piece of ground directly behind our property. It's adjacent to our property. It's owned by City of Redmond. We're in conversations with the City of Redmond about how we might acquire that. On, we've identified an architect, Pinnacle Architecture, to design a facility and give us a cost estimate on it. They've come up with about $5 million, and that will build us a 10,000-square-foot warehouse. That would not put us at the top of the pack. That would put us at the middle of the pack in terms of other warehouses in the state. But we think there's a good, probably 20 to 30 life with 10,000 if it's managed well. We're looking at some innovative features such as taking it taller and putting mezzanine storage in it all the way up. We're looking at the stacking racks where they pull together, and so you can get more racking into it, and you just spread the shelves apart whenever you need to get to something. Different things like that that would make it a really high-efficiency operation. We have raised so far $1,050,000. So that was in part due to a grant from Representative Jack Zika out of his Ara dollars, which we really, or ARPA dollars, which we really appreciated. That was a huge leadership gift. We had a gift from the Maybelle Clark McDonald Foundation, which required a match, and so we were able to raise all of that match already. So that brings the $5 million price tag down to a little over 3.8, 3.9 million. We're asking if Deschutes County would consider, out of the ARPA funding, because it is a wonderful one-time resource that is meant to address pandemic problems like the fact that people can't eat, if Deschutes County would consider a $3.8 million gift to escalate and accelerate the construction of the warehouse. We can be in construction by spring if we have those funds raised. Otherwise, we won't start until such time as we have the money raised, and of course, the costs are escalating rapidly, as you know, so the target just keeps getting bigger every year. The reason we didn't ask for the full difference is because we plan to go and ask Kirk County and Jefferson County to contribute a fair share of this, too. That's where the $150,000 is. Obviously, they have less resources than what Deschutes County has, but we think they should still pay something because their residents also benefit. I have talked to their leadership, and their leadership has expressed interest in the project. So I think we'll let, let Deschutes County be the leadership gift and then go back and talk to the other two about their potential interest. So that's kind of the project that we are laying out. This was brought forward initially as part of the homeless coordinating conversation that Commissioner Chang chaired between Redmond and, and the commission, and of course, eventually we decided this needed to be separated into a separate project simply because it was different in scope and scale than some of the homeless projects that you were working on. So again, I'd just like to thank you all for letting us be here today. Thank you, Commissioner Chang, for accelerating the process of getting us here, and I'd particularly like to thank Treasurer Munn, who has been a tremendous friend to us throughout this, saying, what do you need in order to address the problems that you're facing? We have been able to do that and do that well, and we're very proud of that work, but just between you and me, I just do not be doing this again for a while if we could figure out how to get out of it. So that's our ask. Thank you, gentlemen.
Great job. So you want to, you want to have a facility in place for the next 10 or 20 years, I think you mentioned.
I think we could do a 20 to 30-year facility.
20, 30, okay.
I mean, look how long it's been since the last one went into place.
Yep, yep.
Oh, great.
So I have some questions. I just read that SNAP is going to be increased by 25%. It's a payment of $250. Is it per person, per month? That'll start the 1st of October?
I'm going to kick that over to Carly.
I think some of the formulas is still being worked out, but my understanding is that on average, what it will be is a $36 a month increase for a family of four. That being said, many of those families of four are getting the max benefit right now, which is greater than the $36 a month. So a lot of families are going to, once that expires and the new formula starts, many families are actually going to be receiving less.
So this is actually going to give them less money, even though they're saying that it's going to increase 25%?
If they're, if they're on it right now, they are receiving max SNAP benefits, so yes, in the long run. I mean, when those expire, they will be receiving less.
So are you saying a family of four only gets, will only get $250 a month then?
I'd have to look at the exact breakdown, but I think it's 255, somewhere in there. I'd have to look at the data specifically. I could send that to you.
But that's for a family of four? That's all they're given for the month then?
Correct.
Okay, it's not, if there's an extra child or something, do they get any more?
Yes, it's based on family size.
It is based on family size. And how many people in our central Oregon are on SNAP that you guys are working with?
I mean, right now, I think our, before the pandemic, we were looking at about 48%, and then after that, it was anywhere between 54. I don't know where it is currently right now.
Commissioner Adair, none of us know that because DHS stopped reporting SNAP figures, monthly SNAP figures in September and has not resumed.
September of last year in 2020, you stopped reporting?
They did not have the staffing to put together the reports because of everybody being forced to work off-site.
Well, the rumor is that it's one in six Oregonians are on SNAP. Does that make sense here?
At one point, it was, at the, at the lowest, it was one in six. Recession, it was one in four. The general consensus right now is that it's back to one in four. But again, as Scott mentioned, we don't have solid data on that.
And that would have to come from DHS then?
Correct.
Okay.
So one of the thoughts about SNAP benefits and so the complement food that comes through the warehouse, I guess I'm thinking the content, you know, when you think of dry goods or shelf-stable goods and then SNAP, you can get other, other items. Can you talk a little bit about how, you know, what, what's the mix of what goes through the warehouse opposed to fresh fruits, vegetables, and dairy?
Definitely. So we, I think, we, when you look at the makeup of our food, about 40 to 45% of what we, we receive and what we distribute is fresh produce and fresh, healthy items. We also, we have about 15% in frozen items, such as through USDA, we often get frozen meat, and then in donated channels, through donated channels, we get frozen vegetables, fruits, and then the remainder of that would be dry goods. And so as a network, as an Oregon Food Bank network, we sit down and take a look at our USDA options that aren't a push product that we just have to accept. But when we have an opportunity to take our spending dollars and look at what USDA can offer, we source meal, meal staple, healthy items. So our, right now, our heavy load is rice and beans. We, we have a lot of pasta, pasta sauces, both, and then we take a look at baking, baking products such as masa and flour, and then you take a look at folks that have limited resources. So we have easy-open beef stew pouches, chilies, that type of, that type of food. So the, the heaviest that we, the heaviest type of food that we move and what our main goal is, is really the fresh. and what our main goal is, is really the fresh, the fresh produce. So we get some of that through USDA channels, some of that through donated product through Oregon Food Bank. And then we will purchase ourselves through local vendors as well, so that, so that our, our clients can have a well-rounded, well-rounded meal.
Right.
I wanted to ask, so the, the amount of funds towards your 5 million that you've secured is, is awesome. I, I wanted to ask whether there are, beyond, beyond those sources and beyond the three counties and their ARPA allocations, are there other, are there additional places that you're looking for funds or, or seeking, seeking funding?
So I'm gonna kick that to Suzette, who's online. I warned her yesterday. I said, if they don't talk about fundraising and development, I'll be shocked. And here you are, Commissioner. So Suzette. You're on mute, Suzette.
Yeah, mute would, possibly on both sides. We'll see. There we go.
Okay. I'm Suzette Chapman, Chief Development Officer, and I appreciate your time. Development, first of all, we did acquire the, a matching grant through Maybelle Clark McDonald Foundation. And we're able to raise the match of another 125,000. So we know we can get some of the additional funds through local foundations. I will have to launch a capital campaign. We will have to plan that carefully and deliberately so that we have a good launch and we know whom to target. A couple of foundations come to mind. I, I won't mention them because we, I don't have a commitment from them and I can't actually approach them until I, I've been actually waiting to know first, the outcome of this. And second, I need to take them, you know, firm, detailed budget as well as blueprints or that sort of thing. But yes, we'll launch a campaign that will include foundations. And then we will also, of course, seek support from the community. I know that we face some, what they call donor fatigue. Donors were very generous during the pandemic. And the majority of the money we've raised to match that $125,000 Maybelle Clark McDonald grant came from individuals and some of the donations were, the donations ranged from, you know, $5 to 10,000 or so dollars. So, so yes, we'll just have to launch a very well-planned, deliberate campaign to raise a difference. And that will take time. We will not start. I don't anticipate having, having that, the money we need in hand before, you know, the, what we hope would be the spring, starting the spring construction. Does that answer your question?
Commissioner, I'd add to that, that I think it's important to remember that the food bank operating budget is not, we received no public support for that at all. So we're already having to raise 700, 800,000 a year from the charitable sources just to pay the gas tank and pay the staff and do whatever else has to be done around the logistics. That's the oddity of food banking. Everybody thinks it's an essential service and assumes it will be there. And nobody actually pays for anything other than the food. So, you know, the, while we can raise more, we're competing with ourselves when we're turning in those fundraising applications.
And so there's, there's no, there and there, if I'm re, you know, if I'm understanding what you haven't said, there's, there's no, there's no federal or state funds for operation of food banks, much less capital, capital needs.
Correct. We, we very often, when we need something extraordinary, like a truck, a new truck, for example, or a new refrigerator, we can go to Oregon Food Bank and they can come up with 20,000, 50,000, you know, for a one-time purchase every couple of years. But that's not going to build us a warehouse.
So one of the statements in the information you provided is food is increasingly a support for housing, which is a really good statement in here, knowing that if somebody can make a mortgage and utility payment and there isn't as much pressure on finding the next meal, it can be very valuable.
Not, not only that, every single homeless shelter attaches to the food bank and comes in to pick up food that they use to prepare, you know, one or two meals a day for the homeless population. So it is a critical support to homelessness as well as to people who can't afford the rent. So they give up the food and then we help backfill the food.
Well, so my goal would be to get the building built, but have its utilization go down over time. So we have people working and being able to pay their own bills and buy their own food and cook in their own kitchen, right?
You know, Commissioner, I used to work for an organization called the Partnership to End Poverty, and we never did that either, so.
Ah, the efforts are out there, I know.
Wonderful efforts.
So, yeah, this is a presentation. We got the ARPA dollars available. You know, now if we can kind of discuss about, you know, where we want to go today. One of the things I, I thought I have is, you know, this is the, it looks like the big home run ask. As in, if we get it funded now, we don't have to, you know, there's, there's other, we can just focus on building the building. Is there a possible delineation between building the structure with the doors and the floor and the, you know, the mezzanine and the racks? You know, just if they're, yeah, can you put that in perspective for us?
So what we would do if you were to do partial funding today is it just to phrase the part of the costs. Suzette will immediately launch into fundraising with a capital campaign as fast as she can. I don't believe we would want to start construction and do it in a phased way. Because once we're in there, it's nearly impossible to go back in there. It just doesn't work. So, but we certainly would, any, even partial funding would reduce the amount of effort that has to be put into the secondary fundraising campaign. I have great confidence that Suzette can raise any amount of money I need to raise. It's just how long it's going to take to do it.
But as I say, I guess I'm, you know, the mezzanine and the, and the racking, is that all included in here? I guess that, that's another way to ask that question, yeah.
Full package.
Yeah.
I also, I failed to mention, I have a letter for you, Treasurer Mun has them, from Sergeant, from Nathan Garibay, attesting to the need for the warehouse as part of the region's emergency response system. That, that letter, I will caveat, was written before COVID and before we had any idea of ARPA funds were coming down. But at that, even at that time, we were recognizing this need.
So we play an active role in the COVID group here. And we've had multiple conversations with Nathan Garibey and Ashley Vols. Food banks have really come to a point where, not only in Cascadia, but in wildfires, have been called upon to be, for food, nearly a first responder. So American Cross, American Red Cross, their structure has really changed. So actually, American Cross, Red Cross reaches out to us to see how we can help facilitate food to evacuees. Last year, we supplied food to, the American Red Cross gave a meal voucher, found meals. But then, as folks were staying in a hotel, if they needed, they needed supplemental food in the hotel, that was on the food bank to provide that. When they exited to return back home, we also provided it, provided exit food boxes. So, you know, the trend in our wildfire evacuees is, is, as we know from the smoke outside, is, is still on the rise. So we are, we are looked at on a COVID level to be part of that emergency response as well. So there is a lot of conversation about, you know, the, the, the current facility we're in just isn't adequate for size and storage.
But you have to be commended for how efficient you are. Because if you're bringing in fresh produce, you don't want that to sit there for three days. You know, fresh fruit, it doesn't last. You've, you've got to get to your people. So honestly, maybe the small size is really a nightmare. But on the other way, you don't want that, you want that circling in and out completely. And from my conversations with a lot of local restaurants, they aren't even getting their food deliveries incredibly unreliable. You know, they think they're going to have a delivery Monday morning and it, and it's not going to come in until Thursday. And then what do they do? So.
Yeah, we've been very, I think, the, the benefit of being in food banking is you learn how to pivot and adjust pretty quickly. So we've had a, a great opportunity to partner with some local vendors because we experience the same supply chain concerns that the restaurants do. Our donor, our harvesters and our farmers over in the valley that typically donate, they're having a hard time with their supply chain to have that donated kind of last chance produce, seconds, that can go into the food bank system. So this year, we've been able to partner with some local growers and some farmers. And so we've been having a gleaning group that goes out to some of, to some of the farms every Wednesday and brings back a couple thousand pounds of produce for us too. But again, that's, you know, that, that is more labor-intensive and volunteer-intensive than being able to, to source. But we do what we can.
Commissioner, I just want to shout out to all of those restaurant owners and grocery stores that we work with because we, we really have an integrated operation with them. They have the issue of expiring food that's got to go somewhere. And if it were not for us being able to redistribute it, it would have to go to the landfill. So we're able to help them avoid that expense, be economically more resilient, and still help support our community with what would otherwise become a trash product. It's an amazing relationship and they are wonderful, wonderful partners. We have one of the best partnerships in the state of Oregon.
Great. Well, thank you very much. Yeah, where are we going today? Or is this time to be diving in, you know, to make a financial decision? I see that's a 3.8 million out of a $38 million fund. So this is a full 10% ask, which is interesting when you see that.
I know. It's, Kirk and Jefferson are actually 20% of the population. And yet they're asked for 3.7% of, you know, you're asking us for 3.8. I know we're in a different financial position on many levels, but it just seems like, I don't know. Do we have 97% of the people that are being helped then? Is that how you did it, per people, the allocation? Or 96% of the people, are they coming from Deschutes County?
We did not try and proportionalize it, Commissioner. We just looked at where the actual dollar difference is in the cash and did it accordingly. We did not get a particularly warm reception from one of our other counties when we called them because they have another really large infrastructure project they're putting all of their money towards. So the reality is, it probably falls on you. And, you know, like I said, we can do a share, we can do all, whatever you find appropriate.
I would like to, I would like to see us make some kind of a, a commitment today. Just because I, I think it'd be, it would be helpful, you know, if I was in the position of having to raise funds for this, this project, it would be helpful to know that I was a, a, another step of the way down the path. But I don't have a, I don't have a good thought on what, what the right amount to propose today would be. I also was, I'm, I'm daunted by the 3.8 number, given that it is 10% of our total ARPA funds. And, and we, we all know that there are a lot of other things that we need to, we're, we're going to want to support. But this is a, you know, clearly, food security is, is, you know, a foundational part of of our, of our COVID response and recovery, of just kind of, you know, basic human decency for our, for our communities. So I would, I would love to see us make some kind of an allocation today.
Well, I can tell you, I, I almost lean into this all the way, saying that, you know, having a great facility in place lets the whole organization, you know, really dream big about the throughput of, of food at that point. And just like it was mentioned, for many years to come, this is one of those foundational, I think of the geography of the situation, tri-county area, you know, because we, you know, we'll, we'll see folks from even surrounding areas. I'm thinking Northern Klamath and Northern Lake County, which we see off in Southern Deschutes County. So this is a regional, regional effort at a big scale. We just happen to be in a good spot to be able to, to do something like this. It is a 10% ask, but that's all relative. You know, these are dollars that are coming down from the federal government for investing COVID-related. We're, you know, it was mentioned that numbers have gone up, you know, since, and we're still kind of in the middle of it. So I'm just letting you know, I'm kind of leaning into it, like, yeah, how, how much of this full ask or, or is it the full ask?
Is the warehouse that you're going to be getting rid of, is that an asset that you're going to sell after this? Or are you planning on still keeping it in part of your system?
Absolutely. We'll keep it in our system. It's being built adjacent to the new warehouse. That will be converted to an emergency response center so that we are able, when we have a future emergency, to be able to utilize that portion for the emergency response and not compromise the storage space that the warehouse is supposed to be. This year, we had to use the warehouse itself for the emergency response and that could have gone better.
I don't know. I think 3.8 seems 10%. That seems too much. I, I just at this moment in time, for me personally, I think that, you know, that's 10%. And we still have some really, we have some critical issues in our, on our schedule.
Well, there's some other big ones out there too.
Yes, there's some really big ones. We could, we could, as we said earlier, could have done with 148 million. You know, we're getting 38 million total for the two years, so.
So yeah, for three, this is, this is a big amount of money for three people to digest and figure out what's the way to send this out the door.
I mean, we could, we could look at this as a, as a, as a two-stage thing and, and, you know, make a, make an allocation today and consider, you know, come back and revisit at a later point, making an additional contribution. Or, you know, maybe if we invest a certain amount of funds, it will help to, it will help the fundraising efforts, you know, gain some momentum. And, and, you know, Napier Impact can use that as leverage with, with, with the other counties or with other funders.
Some grant matching type of things if we can, you know.
So how about $2.4 million today? And I just, I take the representative's number and multiply it times three.
I would.
Which, which is a big number. It's not the whole number. And I would support a future discussion, but it really empowers fundraising and buzz around. This project's probably getting over a hump.
I would, I would support 2.4 million.
Commissioner?
That's more than I was thinking of. It's still a lot when you look at this and you look at Deschutes County's ask. And it's $500 a square foot. You know, what, are they really tall? Is it a really tall? I didn't, I mean, I know we're building a courthouse and I saw the funding now just has gone up to $680 a square foot for the allocation. But $500 a square foot for a warehouse seems, I guess it seems realistic, but it seems pretty high at this moment in time. Might be that you need to stay really nimble and wait for a bit if things do slow down. I don't know, you know. I'm seeing building, I saw a lot of houses for sale that had prices reduced in the paper the other day. I saw a whole row of them and I thought, okay, you know that it can't stay at the same level that it has been.
Can I ask how many square feet of refrigerator space there is within the, that 10,000 square feet? I mean, that, that there's, you know, warehouse is one thing, but, you know, very specialized storage, like refrigerator, you know, refrigerator space or, you know, these, this, this high-efficiency shelving that you're talking about. It seems like we're not just talking about an empty warehouse.
Correct, Commissioner. We're talking about the furnished warehouse with the shelving plus the coolers. There are, I believe it's two coolers and one freezer in this one.
Two coolers, two freezers.
And they're huge. They're not just, you know, little tiny ones. They're room-size events. So, so yes, and to the question of the height, the height of the building is 26 feet.
26?
26 feet, yeah. And that allows us to do four, four racking height, which is something that we don't currently utilize, but gives us a lot more long-term storage space. And we could even add another one long-term if we had to.
So that's pelletized activity and fork trucks and aisles with activity up and down them, yeah. Well, yeah, I mean, I'm comfortable with the number I mentioned at this time. And as I say, I mean, it doesn't need to be controversial. We're trying to, you know, empower an effort here.
Well, I, I guess I would, I would feel more comfortable with, okay, say, 2 million. That's still. That's still significantly more than Representative Zika did. And yet it gives us some time to really figure out where we are. And I know there's some really important other asks that are in our proposals. So, anyway.
And with support for reviewing this again a year from now or so?
Yeah, I would think so. Probably before a year. But honestly, if you're bringing in that kind of food, you really want that food to go out the door. I know how my fresh produce is at my house. And, and especially if you have anything that's coming in organic, it nevertheless is low.
Well, so let me tell you.
Commissioner Dare, can I tell you that we had to rent store, cooler storage space down the street from Snow Temp in order to meet the demand? So, we are turning that over. We were one of the only, so out of the 21 regional food banks, only three actually saw distribution numbers rise because the remaining regional food banks had to close down services. The partner agencies had to close down. We mobilized our mobile pantry in that time and was able to take in more food by renting storage additional cooler space. And so only ourselves, Salem, and the Portland area were able to actually meet the demand in COVID. But it, we couldn't do it with the current, with what we had. We had to, we had to rent a refrigerated truck to store what was called Farmer's Family food boxes. We had to have that refrigerated truck, and we had to rent out cooler space that was two miles down the road. So we had to make those trips back and forth.
Well, you guys do an amazing job. Definitely. I so appreciate your wherewithal to rise to the occasion. Truly. I know that's like, somebody asked me if I'd stayed home for two months when COVID hit, and I said, I think I'm working six days a week, you know? So it sounds like you guys are working seven days a week, and I really appreciate it.
One other bit of advocacy. What kind of trucks are coming in from around? Are you seeing a full semi truck?
Yeah, we have two to three semis a week that are doing.
And do they have to back into that facility?
A few, which is a.
See, I, that's, I know that road, that parking lot, that structure. I've been there. So that's exactly what I'm envisioning. You know, if you can build somewhere else, you're going to be able to drive, you know, through, or however, it would be a lot easier than backing up down that side there.
So, I mean, not to get too far off the topic, but the plan is, the city is extending salmon on the backside of the warehouse. You know that property. And so that will give, and then we're, we're acquiring that piece that's behind. And then that will give us the ability to pull the semis through and exit out onto the street. It'll also give us a double, an entrance-exit pattern. So that when we have to stage mass distribution, we can bring people through and then drive them right back out and use the street for stacking, which we currently can't.
Well, and I got to imagine.
Right now, just stacking our parking lot, which is a mess.
There's a semi truck backing up with its backup beeps right next to a Head Start classroom.
It's amazingly impressive when they do it.
So I, I mean, I know. I've been there. It's exactly, so, and you know, many years, exactly.
And can I, can I go back to your point about, about renting storage, refrigerated storage space and a, and a truck? Can you give us a sense of what the weekly or monthly costs for those kinds of rentals are?
Yeah. So, I mean, we were, and actually, Suzette had to write a grant for us to be able to afford that, that storage down the road with Snow Temp. And they were, they were very kind and gave us a discount. But that, but it cost us an additional, it's by pallet. And the grant that we, that Suzette had acquired for us was about $5,000. And so that's a month. And then we also had the refrigerated truck as well. And not just to mention the wear and tear on our staff, to be honest with you. I mean, it's to drive back and forth three times a day, to move pallets, to move perishable food boxes. I mean, they're, they're, we have an amazing crew. And Scott's right, there are six of them. But it's so inefficient, too. I mean, to be honest.
So, yeah, I'm back to strong support for a 2.4 number today with a review in the future. And as I say, I don't want it to be controversial, but I think that's a better, better starting point for us today.
That last, that last little piece, just hearing what it's, hearing where we're sending, Neighbor Impact is sending money today into rental space, which could be, you know, if we were over the hump and towards construction, could be dollars that are being spent on the, on the eventual future warehouse instead. I mean, that, that dials up the urgency for me. And I would support the 2.4 million today.
So, yeah, let's close up this item with that. If you want a minute's motion so we can document the situation, if you want to make that, Alan.
I will move that we allocate $2.4 million of American Rescue, of Deschutes County American Rescue Plan funding to the Neighbor Impact's new food, food bank warehouse project.
And I'll second it, just to confirm where we're going here. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. There we go. Got something landed, big number. Not as big as you quite asked for it, but we'll, we can bring it back.
That is a tremendous leadership gift, Commissioner, and we will use that and turn that into something more and bigger.
Well, and I hope, and I do feel confident this will move the project forward. As in, you can go to the City of Redmond and say, okay, we're ready to move forward. You can go to any funding efforts and say, okay, look at this. We're over, over this amount. So this is exciting.
You just hit the accelerator. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And again, I want to express, we appreciate all the Commissioners have done. I would like to come back at some point and talk to the three of you about the isolation motel and the way that has worked, the impact it has had, and the expenditures on its behalf that came out of the CARES Act dollars. I think that would be of interest to you, and it has been substantial. So thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a great day.
And I would also just add that Karen Prow came and was part of a presenting team for us last week, trying to help us explore childcare investments. And I believe that Redmond package that we were considering a little while back included a, a small childcare investment with Neighbor Impact. I hope that that'll come back as well.
Love to talk to you more about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll get out a press release on the, the big choice of main for the, yeah. Thank you. Oh, yeah. Okay. So this is, yeah. So, and it was dated, oh, this is April 15, 2021. But it was mentioned that this discussion was happening before COVID also.
So Commissioners, the letter I just handed out to you was the letter that was referenced by Mr. Cooper from support for the project from the Sheriff's Office, Deschutes County Sheriff's Department. Okay. So for the rest of the agenda, just a couple of things, housekeeping items. Wednesday, just want to let you know as a reminder that we'll be reviewing, coming back for a second review of the Cleveland Commons Project. So you'll see David Brant, who's the head of Housing Works, will be here. Mr. Cooper will be back from Neighbor Impact. And then, of course, Colleen, our own Colleen Thomas will be here to, to take that discussion to the next level. That'll be on Wednesday. And I also want to let you know that we met last Wednesday with the Chambers of Commerce, with each of the heads of the Chambers of Commerce and COIC to discuss the next round of business assistance funding. And they are really taking in their own hands. They produced a, an email distribution they're going to send out to their membership and begin that querying process. So the goal here is to gather as much information as we can width-wise and bring that back here and synthesize that down into a set of needs that, those gap needs we've talked about, those businesses that have fallen through the cracks. So that's where we're at with that one. And before we jump in, well, then, the other item here is really just to talk about any items on the list that you'd like to discuss for either a future presentation or for funding. And one item I would ask your consideration to fund today would be on page eight of the eligible list, and it's the COIC Grant Distribution Contract Costs. So these were the administrative costs that we bore to distribute the extreme risk business assistance dollars. It was a $1.3 million CARES Act funding from the state for those businesses that weren't allowed to operate for that one week back in April. This was the cost of the contract for COIC to administer those dollars, which we did not fund using the dollars that came from the state.
So this is a $10,935,000.
And the contract was originally for $25,000.
Yep.
They did a really good job of coming in underneath the budget. And any other project you'd like to talk about here, too, as well?
Well, let's do that business real quick. That does, it's kind of the housekeeping associated with the previous one. So if there's support for that.
Yes.
You want to make a motion, or?
Sure. I, I move that we approve $10,935 of American, Deschutes County American Rescue Plan funding for COIC to reimburse them for their administrative work on the Extreme Risk Emergency Business Assistance Grant Fund Distribution. That was two months ago?
That was back in, we actually, the checks went out in early June, or in June, I should say. Yeah.
And I'll second that. And what percentage was that, that this, this $10,935 is then?
The total, the total funding that was distributed is a little over 1.3 million.
Okay.
1%, very small.
And they're, they're, and so COIC is already deeply engaged with us in discussion and just, you know, kind of trying to figure out how we're going to do this next round of business assistance before we've even compensated them for the work they did three months ago.
That's right.
So it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Okay. Another little item for us.
So what's happening then with the business grants? Are we still on hold with that? Are we not in a position yet to start helping those people that are now facing more mandates and issues in our community?
Yeah, that's a very good question. I'm expecting that the results we get back from this query that the Chambers and COIC is, is working on, are working on, I should say, is that we'll have some sense of that. And other.
But you're having a meeting, what, this Wednesday, I think?
No, we already, we already met. And the group decided the best direction to go would be to find out a way to reach out to the membership, to the businesses in the community, and ask the questions about where, where, where have you experienced a financial hardship due to the pandemic that has not already been funded elsewhere? So that's the email that I think they're sending out to the business communities this week, maybe even today or tomorrow.
So when we met with the Chambers, there was kind of two issues. One was the six or seven Chambers getting direct funding themselves for their own chamber, loss of fundraising. And the suggestion there was that they just, because there's only six or seven, that's fairly manageable, that they apply through arpa@deschutes.org with a record of either lost gross receipts or fundraising opportunities that were missed. And then the second point was what Greg was alluding to there, which was that in terms of businesses, we asked them to kind of do an assessment of how many businesses in their area needed assistance so that we, as the county, could get a better indication if we could manage this individually ourselves, or if we needed to go through COIC and the Chambers as well and kind of set up a sub, subcommittee. So that's where we're currently sitting right now.
So I would like to sit down, maybe if Greg or Dan, either, for tomorrow in preparation for Wednesday. And this, you know, this has happened each week where it's like, oh, man, I'm kind of close to a few of these, but I'd just like to talk about a little bit. And because it's, it boils down to kind of the, the buckets that we talked about, you know? Okay, if we spin this here, is, you know, what's the percent of a bucket? What's the bigger picture? What are the big ones on the horizon? So I just need kind of one more sit-down. So if somebody's available for tomorrow for me.
Sure. We can, we can reach out and make sure we're on your calendar. One other point I would add, Commissioner DeMone, you asked for a graphic representation. So if you look on the package there, this was a first attempt to sort of help answer that question graphically. So sort of do a quick look and understand where the funds have been allocated already by those big buckets and also by project level.
Now, these, both these graphics are very valuable and helpful. So as I say, I'm thinking, yeah, just a little bit of proportions of the types of allocations is what I'm, a little of analysis there. Because there's some of these things we pick off pretty quick here, too. And maybe we can prep for Wednesday to do some of that. Any, anything else?
Commissioners, just one quick point. You had asked for staff to reach out to Mount Bachelor on the biomass project. So I've done that. That's scheduled for next Wednesday, the 1st of September. They'll be coming in and making a presentation. It may not be eligible under ARPA, but you had expressed interest in potentially investing other funds. So that presentation is scheduled for next Wednesday's board meeting.
It is not eligible? Is that the determination? Do we know that?
It may not be eligible.
There was a big write-up in the paper, or was it for, yeah, Saturday, maybe, for Prime Bill's biomass project, possibly, a future project. And so the reality there is that that's kind of still out there, you know? And this one's closer. You know, it's kind of design engineered and fundable. So.
Right. They know, they know that the payback is there if they can just get the first cost covered.
But that's great. So that's next Wednesday, about 10 days from now. Good.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any additional items that I wanted to, to move forward on today. But, but I, I just wanted to thank the two of you again for all of the work that you're doing to move, you know, increasingly, increasing, you know, to keep an increasing number of balls in the air here and, and, you know, eventually land a few of them as, as we, as we're picking, picking off some decisions. And I hope that the additional staffing support that we've, we've discussed, I hope that, that can, can, can materialize soon so that, to back you up.
Thank you. Yeah, we, we do, too.
It would be nice, wouldn't it? I'm getting several emails on the Sisters Cold Weather Shelter. Perhaps maybe they could come in and give us a bit presentation. And then also, there was some, I need some clarity on habitats. Ask for Sisters. I know it's in the Woodlands Project. And is that for 10 or 15 spots? So perhaps maybe they could come in and just give us a bit of an update on that.
Okay, we'll put that on the calendar.
I had the, I had the chance. I was, I was in Sisters, or I, I had planned some time to go to Sisters, and I had the chance to take a peek at the building that they are exploring as a, as a potential winter warming shelter. And it's, it's a very interesting building that, that's been on the market for a while. And, and, you know, the way that it's laid out, it, it really kind of lends itself to, you know, some kind of long-term care for multiple residents. It's not, it's, it's not a building that you could just turn into a home. And it's not a building that you could convert to a hotel either. I mean, it's a, it's a very unique space. That's in, that's in great shape. And for those kinds of functions, you know, housing multiple unrelated people who, you know, who might need some more intensive support and services, that seemed like a great space. So I, I just put that out there. If either of you are, are in, in, up in Sisters anytime in the, in the near future, you might, you might ask to take a peek at that.
We also have that building. We still have the, where Mid-Oregon Credit Union was, I believe that's still empty. They moved out, didn't they not?
One unit is. It's occupied by the Sheriff's Office and the Vet's Office.
Right. I know. But we have that one, what is it? Is it 2,500 square feet, or is it 1,500?
I don't recall, Commissioner.
I know. I mean, I was just thinking like, oh, my gosh, that's been sitting empty for, you know, eight months, something like that, nine months, maybe even more. And perhaps that might be something usable that we already have than spending a million dollars. And it's right by the Sheriff's Office, right?
Right next door.
Right by the post office. It's in a good, it's in a pretty good location. I know Kristia told me it was not rented when I talked to her the other day.
It has not been rented.
Right.
Been a number of tire kickers, but no, no lease yet.
Maybe she can remind me how many square feet it has and, you know, because, see, we bought that whole entire building. Wasn't it like over 6,000 square feet for less than a million or a million right there?
Million.
Yeah, for that entire building. Yeah, for that entire building.
Mm-hmm.
That was, what, 20 years old or something? Anyway, so I know we are getting some rent checks out of it.
Thank you very much for joining us today. We'll set up for Wednesday again.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four, a little bit behind schedule as estimated, a consideration of marijuana market enforcement grant. Oh, thank you, Kathleen, for standing by. If I would have known, I could have put those together. I didn't know you were going to stand by for that.
That's all right. No problem at all. So I'm here, I'm with the management analyst at the district attorney's office, and I'm here on behalf of the entire Deschutes County Illegal Marijuana Market Enforcement Team, which involves the sheriff's office, Ben PD, and the DA's office. And we're asking for consideration and approval to apply for the Criminal Justice Commission's Illegal Marijuana Enforcement Grant. This will be the third cycle of grant funding. That program is based off of Senate Bill 1544, which focuses on assisting local agencies with their efforts to address illegal marijuana, the illegal marijuana market in Oregon, and the emphasis on enhanced prosecution and enforcement. And we're specifically looking at issues related to rural areas, large-scale operations, organized crime, and diversion of marijuana outside of the state. And over the last three years, we've worked in concert as a team to really stop a lot of the illegal activity that's been occurring. There have been a number of large-scale cases that have gotten media attention. But one of the challenges with this is that some of these cases are really complex. There's, we are suspecting that there's some organized crime involved, there's a lot of money laundering. And so from the prosecution standpoint, it takes us an extensive period of time to actually get these cases to that point where we can actually prosecute them. And so we are looking to apply for funding again. The funding will be specifically used for two part-time analysts with, you know, one person within our office, as well as one person at the sheriff's office, overtime for the detectives that are working on the program, a lot of training, equipment, continued research through all these programs. We've been working with Portland State University, looking at the impact of this law on different agencies and organizations, and some supplies. When I submitted the report to present today, we were under the impression that the grant was going to be a two-year traditional biennium. I actually spoke with Criminal Justice Commission later that afternoon or on Friday morning, and they said they have made a last-minute change for our applications, and they're requesting everyone to apply for actually a two-and-a-half-year period of time. So the grant would run from July 1st, 2021, through December 31st, 2023. So our actual grant total is going to be much closer to about $556,000 over two-and-a-half years versus about the 478,000, I think I had submitted in my original proposal. The biggest change is some additional salaries and the overtime during those last six months. The other thing that's noted, that we had originally talked to CJC in our current grant cycle about having some, applying for a no-cost extension that had been approved, and then they've made some changes, and they're actually going to take the remaining funds that we have under our current grant and roll it into our second grant. So that would be an additional $100,000. And it's my understanding that that's been budgeted for, through the sheriff's office for this coming year. But just so you know, that additional funds would be coming in that are based upon the last grant, but they're incorporated in this, but not incorporated into the total that you're seeing right now. And so with those rollover funds, some of the big things that we're going to be focusing on is finishing up our public outreach component. So I'm looking forward in the next, hopefully, two months to be able to share with you our Canofax website that will help educate the public on a lot of the nuances that make it really difficult to understand what is or is not legal regarding cannabis in our county, as well as the state as a whole, and hopefully increasing leads on illegal marijuana activity. And the other big thing is we're going to be doing a pilot project with some of those rollover funds to try to determine whether or not there's additional illegal activity occurring at these illegal sites related to environmental degradation, to maybe land. And so we're having some researchers come out to see if our, what we're speculating may be true is actually occurring. And that'll kind of help our efforts going forward in determining who needs to come out when we have certain search warrants and what, what additional things we need to be looking for. And I'll pause there to see if you have any specific questions.
So Kathleen, what was that exact number that you said you're applying for now? Because it's a two-and-a-half-year grant, 566-something?
Uh, yes. We're, we're finalizing that number, but it's going to be close to $556,000.
Okay. Yes, I actually went on a drug raid a couple of weeks ago, and it was fascinating because it was an outdoor hemp operation, but really, they had a whole bunch of marijuana. And they were watering it like crazy, and they had a greenhouse that had been excavated so that it didn't actually appear, you know, so easily from the road. They, they had done a lot of things at this property. And I could see that it was totally a partnership between the sheriff's office, Ben PD, the DAs, and then apparently we need our own testing capacity because the state police was here also doing the evaluation with their $33,000 lab apparatus. I guess we have one on order?
And we have included that equipment in this new proposal as well, so we would have our own.
Oh, good, good.
Kathleen, is this a, a competitive grant program? Or, I mean, you were, you were talking about how they were going to roll over your 109 left over from the last grant. It sounds like you have a pretty good relationship with the granter.
Yeah. So it is competitive. It's fairly narrow, and who can apply? You have to be a rural county to apply for the funding. Our hope is that we get the funding, and there's kind of the assumption that we will going forward, but nothing's ever a guarantee. But I think our chances of getting this funding are extremely high.
Okay. That's nice to know.
Yes.
So terminology-wise, when we say cannabis or marijuana or hemp, does hemp and marijuana both cannabis? Is that how you would use those terms?
So, yes, they all fall under, they're all the cannabis plant. It depends on how much THC. One of the reasons, particularly for our website, that we're getting away from using the term marijuana, is that there's a lot of historical negative connotations with the term, and the state continues to use that term. But from an education standpoint, we're using the term cannabis. They're all based off the same plant, but it all depends on the THC level that's in it.
So I move approval of submitting a grant proposal to the Criminal Justice Commission for the 2123 Illegal Marijuana Market Enforcement Grant Program. So marijuana is still in that motion, though?
It is.
I'll, I'll second, but I, but, you know, I would love to ask another question or two.
Oh, yes, go ahead. That's seconded, yeah.
Is this a good time?
Discussion or something else?
Uh, yeah, no, it's discussion.
Yeah.
Okay. So this, this is, this grant is important to a program of work. And I'm trying, you know, kind of a, a set program of work described in, in this proposal, I'm trying to under, get a sense of how, what other fund sources we're using to cover the, you know, the, the program of work for the team. And, you know, one of the, I believe that historically we've used some of the marijuana tax revenue for, you know, for these, you know, these efforts essentially to shut down illegal marijuana production and, and distribution. But is, is that, is that accurate? And if, if so, what have we been doing to kind of cover that slice of funding that hasn't been coming in for, since fall 2019?
So are you referring to the, the grant funds and how they're funded, or internally within Deschutes County, how we've been funding the, our portion of the program?
I guess I'm, I'm asking, I, I, I see these grant funds as one of the fund sources for a program of work, and I'm trying to understand what the other funding sources are, including questions about, you know, where the marijuana tax revenue fits in.
So most, so we have a dedicated DDA who handles a lot of these, the cases that come through for our office, so that's under our umbrella for the DA's office, and because these are cases that we would prosecute anyway. And similarly with Ben PD, as well as the sheriff's office, they have officers or detectives assigned to the Central Oregon Drug Enforcement Team that specifically work on marijuana. So they're funding those under their normal umbrella of their budgetary items.
Okay. And so there, there's not a, there's not a role for the, the tax revenues in this, in this body of work? Or is, is that possibly coming through the sheriff's office?
Sheriff's Office Deputy Dedicated Time.
Okay.
Yeah, so the, in partnership with this. So this, this complements that, but not through the DA's office is probably why we're not seeing it the same way.
Got it. Okay.
So there has been a motion and a second.
Commissioners, just clarification. The money for the detectives' marijuana enforcement in the sheriff's office is split between the sheriff's office and County General Fund. That was an agreement that was reached as part of budget deliberations back in June for FY '22.
So the, the deputies that this grant would provide overtime for, the, the base funding for those deputies is partially sheriff's office, partially general fund at the moment?
Well, there was a set amount, and it was to cover their budgeted salaries. I don't recall there being, we didn't get that granular in terms of any overtime that may be associated with those positions. I gather it was just the base position. So as Kathleen indicated, to the extent there is overtime that's over and above what was included in the budget, then it sounds like this grant would cover that.
Any other discussion?
And I guess I, oh, sorry.
No, please.
I just wanted to note, too, and I'm not sure how this impacts your decision and statements, that the fact that this grant will now actually go into six months into FY '24, so I'm not sure if that impacts anything on your end as well.
We'll get, we'll deal with it when we get there.
Okay.
Always, it's always nice to have, it's always nice to have a longer-term grant.
There you go.
But you said that it ended on 12/31/23. I thought, that's two and a half years, and now you're saying it's really three years?
No, it, it will start, the grant starts July 1st, 2021, and goes through December 31st, 2023.
Correct. Oh, okay, I get it. You're talking fiscal, financial?
Fiscal years, yes.
Yes, got it. Okay, sorry.
So we're already, we're already almost two months into the, into the grant term?
Yes.
Interesting.
So we know this isn't Kathleen's fault because it's not due until August 27th.
Right. Yeah, yeah, no, I wasn't, I, I wasn't asking you that question, you know, out of scrutiny of, of, of your work. It was, it was just more, it's always interesting to, to work with granters who, who retroactively cover activities.
Well, these activities happen following a legislative session. That's why these happen.
Right, okay.
July, June 30th or whatever is the grand crescendo, and then this is the follow-on work from a legislator.
Got it. That makes sense.
Okay, so it's been motioned and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing then Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes.
Thank you very much.
Just wanted to keep hold on to that one.
Kathleen, how much money is going to Southern Oregon, then? How much do you think they're applying for since they've got such major, major, major problems there?
The last funding cycle, they got substantially more than we got in Deschutes County because they actually were paying for additional detectives and staff to work on their projects because they have such, their resources are so much smaller than ours.
Okay, all right.
So my guess, I know that they have $6 million for funding this, this cycle. We, I believe if memory serves me, I think we got a little over $300,000 last time, but the, the amount of money that they have available is larger. So we've given the extended period of time, as well as some additional pieces of equipment and things, we've asked for a little more to see what they come back with. But my guess is that Southern Oregon counties will probably get over a million. That's my total guess.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Dare asked, do you think that's for each county in, like Jackson and Josephine, or, or collectively they'll get a million?
Each, probably.
They are the big, they are the legal biggest, you know, marijuana producers in the state, so.
And I, and I know that our team frequently, not, I won't say frequently, but has gone down to assist for some of their bigger grows as well, when they're trying to address some of those things. So there's been actually a really nice partnership that's been occurring to help each other out. And there's a new agency meeting statewide that we've started participating in this summer, a monthly meeting, kind of to discuss a lot of the topics. So we're kind of looking at this more holistically as a state, rather than just addressing everything county by county, which I think is going to be really helpful.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a great day. At this time, item number five, complaint regarding Lapine Rural Fire Protection District, Chris Belt, thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Commissioner DeBonne. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Today, I'm basically here in my capacity as, I guess, certainly Assistant County Counsel, but also I've been acting as liaison between the Board and the Deschutes County ASA Advisory Committee, which, to this point, has received two complaints against Lapine, I'll call them Lapine Fire, it's the Lapine Rural Fire Protection District. About a month ago, Thomas, Tom Kuhn, who is the administrator for the committee, received a third complaint on behalf of St. Charles and Lapine Community Health in addition to the first two. And this complaint alleges certain, basically alleges that certain conduct of Lapine Fire and billing the two clinics in Lapine, Lapine Community Health and St. Charles-Lapine, possibly violates or alleges that it violates regulations affecting and governing the billing of Medicare and Medicaid patients. The complaint itself references and includes a copy of a letter that was sent to Representative Bence's office by the Department of Health and Human Services. Essentially, you could call it pretty much an opinion letter. And in that opinion letter, there, there is some basis which tends to support the allegations and the complaint from St. Charles and from Lapine Community Health. I don't know who requested that inquiry, but certainly it appears that somebody from Clip Bence's office, Representative Bence's office, wrote a letter or, or made a request in whatever form to HHS. And, and it resulted in a response, which again was, I don't know if you can necessarily call it an opinion letter, but it certainly expresses their view on how the regulations might impact, in particular, whether or not an ambulance service provider can direct bill a medical provider, a clinic, or a doctor when that patient is a Medicaid or Medicare insured person. And so that's the basis for the complaint. And what I'm here to do today is under, I believe it's Section 8.2 of the ASA Plan and the code, ask that the court, or excuse me, the court, the Commissioners, that the Board of County Commissioners assigns the review and investigation of that complaint to the ASA Advisory Board, as it did with the first two.
Well, so for clarity, I mean, I wasn't reading it like this, but so this is Hart Wagner on behalf of Lapine Community Health Center and Clinic, and Lapine, or St. Charles Clinic, I'm sorry. So two entities. But they're not acknowledging that they asked for this letter of opinion, or from CM?
There's no indication in there as far as who asked for that opinion. I mean, it certainly, they're responding to what appears to be an inquiry from Representative Bence's office.
So maybe it's from his office, yeah.
Yeah, so it appears that, you know, perhaps somebody in the community contacted Representative Bence's office and put this issue before. Bence's office and put this issue before, before that office, and that someone there requested some sort of an advisory letter or opinion from Department of Health and Human Services, and that that letter was provided. Again, if you read the complaint, it basically just says, if this is occurring, we would ask that the Advisory Board, or excuse me, the Advisory Committee look into this and investigate it, as it has done with the previous two complaints, or as it is doing.
So at this time, the procedure would be to assign to the ASA.
I move that we assign the complaint to the Deschutes ASA Committee at the earliest convenience.
Second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes, yes. So Chris, while you're here, we did just get a response from the district a couple hours ago for the, on a different but related item, on public-private partnership request with CMT. So, yeah, there, there's a letter available that, it just came in.
Oh, I already printed it upstairs.
Yeah, it was about a half hour before this, so that's why I printed the copy.
I didn't bring a copy.
Actually, I brought mine down.
Amazing.
It's a doc.
So Chris, yeah, you were, I forwarded it to you at some point, or when I got it. Were you able to see that, Chris?
I reviewed it briefly, Commissioner. I did, DeBoeck, I didn't expect to discuss that with you today, but I, I do have at least a general idea of what they said. It was a response to some information requested by the Board with respect to the proposed relationship with CMT, yeah.
Great. Well, so I'm just acknowledging that they, you know, this is the point where they've, they've offered us, okay, here's our package. So, you know, we don't need to take it any farther today. I just wanted to acknowledge that it's been received. I did respond to the email to the chief and the five board members. I think I CC'd everybody, saying that, yeah, thank you for the, for the information, so. Um, yeah, just schedule-wise, now it's time to maybe.
Is it a reasonable time to ask a question about this letter?
Well, yeah, so as the ASA, we're going to be receiving this at some point.
So the, the Lapine Rural Fire Protection District Board sent us this letter and kind of reported back on some of the things that we had asked them about, or, you know, provided information. And I was wondering whether the, what, what, one of the things they did not discuss in this letter was the information that we requested from them about essentially whether the four locations that had been specified where CMT would be providing service to, whether those locations had, you know, had any feedback or, or input on, on the proposal. And I was wondering whether, I couldn't remember whether these three items that they, they do provide back were, were called out as, you know, you know, we'd like one, two, and three, you know, whether we had said we'd like one, two, and three, and there, this is just a response back, or whether the request about, you know, communication with those four locations was, was part of the list, and they, they just omitted that one, or?
These are in response to my letter, you know, the letters that I signed, but we talked about the content. So confirmation that 911 can dispatch as they requested. So remember, that is the content of four addresses during business hours, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, five days a week. So that's kind of implied in there. It's not laid out, but it's implied in there. And I'm not defending them, I'm just saying, when I, when I look at this, I can say, oh, that's the hook to that concept. Number two is CMT's information and paperwork, which I asked for in the second letter, making sure that, hey, if we don't have this, we don't have this, we need to get it. And then, yeah, so documentation of public pri, yeah, so this is the backup of how we got here. So I just looked at the attachments real quick, it looked like kind of the history and some of the emails about how, what brought us to this, you know, us referring to the community, not us at the Board of Commissioners at this time. So then it leaves us in a spot where we've been notified, and the clinics know, they, they know that this discussion's happening, that those addresses to be dispatched during different hours, business hours. But it's really, I mean, you deduce, I deduce, the fact that it, it needs to be discussed here. This is where it's going to be discussed. So that's what we're acknowledging, you know, they, if this is the complete package to us, it asks for a joint meeting with their Board, is, is really what they're asking for. So we got to figure out how we want to proceed. And we don't need to make decisions today, I'm just acknowledging that it was here. We can talk about it offline, Tom can help, Dave can help, just, you know, what's, what's step one, two, three from here? And we just leave it there. Okay, that's all we need to do today on that related topic.
Did we actually vote?
There's nothing to vote on. Uh, yeah, we voted on the, sending it to the ASA Committee, the complaint, yeah.
All right, just wanted to be sure we voted to send it.
Okay, so at this time, item number.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, thank you very much, yep. I forgot you were there, Chris, sorry.
Okay, good afternoon.
At this time, item number six, discussion of Deschutes County College 2021 program. So this is double duty.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, Whitney Hale, Communications Director. I'm here to talk to you today about our 2021 County College class. I know you spoke with Laura Skundrick last week about a few details related to the class schedule. And while the original intent of today's item was to simply discuss the Board presentation for County College, I'd also like to touch on the schedule and roster briefly with you before we get into review of the presentation, if that works for the Board. Great. In your conversation with Laura last week, you expressed a desire to look at a few options related to the schedule. And so Laura has done a lot of work in canvassing departments and looking at meeting room availability, and she's put together two draft schedules that I'm happy to share with you. One is a condensed schedule that essentially reduces the amount of time that departments will present, and it doubles up departments on certain nights. So departments that historically have had an entire night to present themselves would share time with another department. What that consolidated schedule does is it moves through the program more quickly, and it allows for more outside class time, which we're hoping if we go that route, that we can get there earlier in the year and avoid potentially colder temperatures. The second schedule option, and I'll pass these out here in a second, offers you an option that would have two nights a week. Class would be held two nights a week as opposed to one night a week. And again, that's in an effort because we would be hosting more outside opportunities for the class to get through the schedule earlier in the fall before we get into potentially colder months. So as I mentioned, Laura has been vetting both of these options with departments, and I think as staff, we're happy to support either one, but wanted to give you a few options to look at as we think of, of what this year's County College program might look like.
So kind of the professional opinion is, is to get it done in the better weather. I guess, I mean, I'm thinking from the health department's point of view, what would be an optimal way to, you know, bring people together? Because the other way to go is to do it once a week, because then, you know, it's a six-to-nine day incubation period if we're going to have a COVID problem.
I think.
I'm just thinking health-wise.
In looking at these options, we were looking at a couple factors. One was nights of the week where both Barnes &amp; Sawyer and D'Armond were available, and so we could open up the wall and potentially use all of the room. The other was departments where we could lean on having outside space available to us and do that in a way that made sense. So for instance, in, in the schedule, you'll see Health Services, since you called them out as an, as an example, were proposing that they would have their presentation outside at the Courtney Building. But it would still be, you know, in late September, so we're hopeful that the weather would still be nice at that time of the year. So I think from staff's perspective, I will say, I think we have a bit of concern in terms of what a two-day-a-week schedule may mean for applicants. It's a big ask to make of folks who may be working full-time and have other commitments on their plate. And so, you know, that's one thing to consider as we look at these two options. I would also say that with a consolidated one-day-a-week schedule, we're limiting presentation time. So there's a variety of factors that the Board can take into consideration here.
I mean, I do, I do, I do want to ask about sticking with more, a more traditional schedule and sort of, I guess, just sort of crossing our fingers that the modeling that we've seen is actually going to bear out. That the OHSU modeling that they, that, that, you know, shows this massive spike that, that peaks in, in early September, it does drop off pretty quickly. So I, I mean, if we, if we wanted to, if we wanted to depend on that or count on that, then, you know, by, you know, by early to mid-October, you know, case, case numbers will be dramatically down, the, you know, the, the transmission of COVID in our community will, will have substantially decreased. And, and so, I mean, if we stuck to a traditional schedule, a more standard schedule, and did what we could outdoors or in, you know, large, well-ventilated, very well-ventilated spaces early, and save the other things for, for, you know, mid-October onward, I, I mean, is that just our, is that just too risky? Like, too risky, you know, kind of banking on that, banking on that modeling being, you know, being real, or?
Well, that's for us to decide.
Too risky, or, you know, will that, will, will that make County College participants really, you know, too uncomfortable that, you know, that, that they're being exposed to, to, to risk?
Any thoughts, Commissioner Dare?
Well, my COVID meeting just went to, back to Zoom. My COIC meeting, they asked us what we wanted, it's gone back to Zoom. Yeah, a lot of my meetings are all going back to Zoom. Now, we did meet the other day in the park, the wind was blowing like 30 miles an hour in Sisters, and we were outside, so, anyway, but most of the choices people have been making have been, hey, maybe we need to go back to Zoom. We, what, had 100, we had 365 cases today, that's 122 a day. So we're still, seven times 122, we're still up there in the big numbers. And it's what, the 23rd of August? So, it's, it's a call. You know, the fact that you have option two, everything's done in September, that's pretty good. What was it, was it really 29 this morning in Lapine? That's what they.
Out of my house.
That's what they said on the radio.
We saw freezing a couple nights ago, which was kind of surprising, but it was 37 this morning.
Okay, well, it was like, I think it was 34 at my house this morning, so, anyway, yeah, hopefully we're going to get a lot of snow this winter, and it's going to fall where it needs to, like in the snowpack. So I don't, you know, I think it's, you know, clearly I've seen a lot of my meetings have all been moved back to Zoom.
So this is a community effort, bringing in community members to show the positive great things, to be fully open and available for questions, no matter how, you know, no matter what, you know, this, this is it, this is what we do, Deschutes County College. I could, I could flip a coin almost on this, because my point is, people are still going to the store, wearing a mask, and doing business, you know, going out to dinner, and, you know, do we stop this because this is happening or not? One, on one hand, we could just walk away and do it next year because, you know, there's a slight, you know, possibility that somebody could walk in with COVID and share it with a group, and that would be a bad situation. On the other hand, just power through it. So, yeah, it's just letting you know, that's totally where I'm at. We're kind of at a no-go, no-go signal. When's the first one? Next Tuesday?
Class is scheduled to begin next week, and it would be helpful, I think, if we can.
Get real clear.
Get a little bit of direction today so that we can help to move things forward.
And this is, so then, this is a discretionary effort, you know, why, why do it if, if things are up in the air? I just had a phone conversation earlier today with a gentleman who's, can't believe we're not mandating masks, and he thinks that somebody that's not wearing a mask is threatening everybody's lives. You know, it's just, the perceptions are all over the place right now, so it is just, and so, so some people would be happy to be in the room, other people may be really offended that we're, you know, but if you took half the people and said, oh, this is great, and the other half are upset we did it, it's not a good situation either.
I just saw a new report, and it actually said that, you know how the OSHA requires a six-times-an-hour air filter change? And actually, even two-times-an-hour per this study was more effective than some of the cloth mask and things that people are wearing. So I thought that was good to know. I mean, our buildings do change the air six times, do they not? Isn't that what was required? I know they do it at the fairgrounds, it's at least six times an hour. That was an OSHA mandate.
I believe so.
Yeah.
That sounds like what I remember Eric telling us.
Yes.
So that's, that's positive.
Does it bring any communication with the folks that have signed up?
Yes, following her discussion with you last week, Laura did email all applicants, and she let them know that we're still finalizing a few details and that we expected to have additional information to them as soon as possible. And she said that applicants appreciated the update, and she didn't get any, they were appreciative and didn't get any additional feedback on that.
So then, let's think about the scenario of us standing in front of the group with masks and have the masks on after we try to have a little meal, maybe spread out in this room wide open. Is that, is that the right place to be? Is that the right thing to be doing? Because, I mean, I'd love to talk to, I just, I'm yearning to share with, you know, the great work we do here at Deschutes County with the group of engaged citizens.
I will note, because I know if I don't, Sharon will send me some messages. If we are going to try and use both rooms for the first night, we are going to need to move away from Tuesday night and look at either Monday or Wednesday night of next week for the first session, because there's a conflict in this room on, on Tuesday. So just for the Board's consideration.
I think having two a week is kind of a bit much. I mean, I don't know, you know?
Yeah, I agree that we shouldn't do that. And the idea was just to get out, get it over with before the weather gets real cold.
I know, I know, well.
And I kind of feel like the, you know, I have not attended County College, because we did, it wasn't held last year. But it just seems like taking, taking the, taking our department presentations and compressing them to halftime is, it's a lot, it's a lot.
So you're a strong advocate for doing the program still, then?
I am, I am. And I, I guess I would support continuing to do the program full-length with, you know, the way that I, that I suggested, try to shuffle the, you know, shuffle items that can be done outside or in.
So just do it a little bit more COVID.
Yeah, yeah. If it, if it doesn't, if it doesn't totally screw up the curriculum to change the, shuffle the order around of the departments, I thought that would be my, that would be my preference. But I, I, I believe, I believe in the, in the scenario modeling, you know, that, that shows a dramatic, you know, that, that, that we are going to hit this, you know, horrible peak in a couple of weeks, and then it will, it will lean quickly after that.
Commissioner Dare, are you comfortable proceeding with this, a nominal schedule with COVID protocols enhanced?
We can do a lot of things outside.
So then we don't change the schedule?
Right, we do August 31st to the 19th, and then we just, we're just more outside. See, what was I, I was outside with like 1,200 people on Saturday night, and, yeah.
Okay. That is definitely an option, and we have gone over a variety of options. So yes, we could flip our early sessions to outdoors, and we've talked about some ways that we can, with technology, with a projector and a screen and those types of things, explore that and pursue that. And we've also talked about potentially, if, if the Board's desire was to embrace a more traditional schedule, I think we could look at nights of the week where we'd have the full use of all three rooms. It probably would mean that the class wouldn't be held consistently on a Tuesday night, but I think if we got creative in the night of the week the class was held, we could work on a schedule that was once a week, full-length, but with the use of the larger room, but obviously leaning towards outdoor when it feels appropriate and is available.
Okay.
And don't forget the extra credit. I know we had extra credit if we went to. I know, uh, we had extra credit if we went to the jail, and in case you might have to miss something, you still want to be able to graduate, so, you know, anyway, it was a-
Okay, so it sounds like it's a pretty nominal schedule then, we're not changing it drastically, very much COVID protocol. Welcome everybody in. That was up in the air till just now, huh?
Yes, that's very helpful direction. One thing that Laura had looked at in terms of, just another logistical item, would be that we potentially could offer food on night one and then the graduation night, but potentially not offer it every night. And I, that's just something I wanted to check in with the board on, does that feel appropriate? Would you be comfortable with, with that, or would you like to?
Um, I'd say with, I would say yes, because if we're moving the schedule around, possibly not sure which room we're going to be in, uh, you know, and some simple packaged, you know, granola bars or something could be available too, so it's just not going to be a meal, because, yeah.
We can have organic fruit.
The, the way it usually works, I mean, do people eat while the program is happening, or do they have like a, a just social mealtime and then, and then get down to it?
In years past, there's been, the food has been available early, and then we've started the presentation, and certainly some folks, especially depending on their work schedules, have continued to eat, you know, through the beginning of the presentation. This year, we were trying to incorporate more of our ISF departments, and so the thought was that the ISF departments would present in the window of the time that was traditionally dinner, that they would be kind of a, a speaker during the meal. But that's helpful, definitely, and I can, I'm happy to move on to just a few roster check-ins, unless the board has other questions on schedule?
Oh, I just realized, because of COVID, they won't be able to probably visit the jail.
We-
So, find some extra credit that they could do, I don't know what, you know, something.
Happy to do that.
But I mean, you know, if we really-
Fuel, uh, fuel reduction efforts at a commissioner's house, they can come to my place and see you.
There may be some other modifications like that along those lines also, because some of the departments use vans to do tours of certain aspects of the facility, which we, you know, probably aren't going to want to, you know, grant people into enclosed space like that, so we either have to, we'll have to modify in some way, either not do the tours or do them in shifts, or rent additional vehicles or-
Everybody drive your car down to the floor of the landfill.
Or having golf carts, like at the fairgrounds, so then we could worry about people having accidents with their golf cart, but, you know, because I remember we were in a long, like, open, um, train, and it was really nice, but I don't think COVID would like that.
Yes, Tom's right, and we have been discussing with departments a few options of how we might modify the tours that involve vehicles, so I think that there's the potential that some of this might look a little different than it has in, in years past.
Well, yeah, but meeting, meeting the staff and the director and the other elected officials, there's going to be a lot of value all over the place.
One way to kind of keep food and social time incorporated would be to, like, I don't know, hire a food truck to come and feed people in the parking lot for a half-an-hour before the, the start time or something like that, or?
That's definitely, I'm, I'm happy to look into that and chat, chat with Laura about options that, you know, would look, would be creative options to offer food, if the board would like to offer food on more than just the first and the ending sessions.
Yeah, I'm just, in heightened COVID protocols, whatever that means, I'm not, I don't want to put too much direction to it after that.
Okay. Um, moving on to the roster, I, Laura sent you a message at the end of last week, she had sent an initial email that included a proposed roster of 20, and then based on feedback, had, was proposing to add three additional applicants to that proposed roster. Those three additional applicants would help to balance the geographic diversity of the class, and so I'm certainly happy to connect with you one-on-one if, if that'd be easier, but if the, the board did have a chance to take a peek at that and is supportive of that, we will definitely get to work on contacting those applicants and beginning the background check process.
I called Laura earlier today, just wanted to touch base with her, she, we didn't talk, but yeah, I, just one quick conversation, then I'll be able to-
Great.
-proceed.
Thank you, that's perfect. Um, I think those are all the housekeeping items, I do have the admin and board presentation with me, if the board would like to review it and kind of chat about how that, how you'd like to see that flow for next week's class, would that be?
Sure, we can flip through it, I do have a copy of it here, I was able to grab it. We all have it.
We do.
I'm happy if the board has any general feedback, we can incorporate that. In years past, the board has divided up kind of slides and, and presentation flow, so I'm also happy to kind of take notes during that conversation if that's helpful, and provide you a, a copy that includes slide notes that may be helpful for next week's presentation.
We can just kind of flip into a few here, so then, we would do self-introductions possibly here, looking at the photos of us, and about a half-hour each. Is that too much?
Half-hour, you think so? Oh, come on.
Not without food, yeah.
Completely at your discretion.
But that, yeah, so that'll be our first opportunity to, well, so let's talk about that, so welcome to county college, tonight's agenda, who's going to even do that? So that would be, is Laura leading this, or is this your?
Nope, Laura is taking over responsibility for the program, so in years past, I have done that, and I will chat with her, but I anticipate she will kind of emcee the start, because she will be with the class each week, so she'll introduce them to the various departments as they travel throughout the county.
That'll be her opportunity to kind of bring the whole thing together.
Yep.
And then we'll do our introductions. Okay, so that would be her introductory statements, our introductions, then this, the next one says county college, what to expect, so what's the vision there? Is this her again, or is this a video?
Um, that's a transition slide, and I think my thought in putting together the presentation was that you could self-introduce, and then one of the commissioners could transition into, we're going to talk a little bit about the program and what county college is, although staff could certainly support this section as well, if you'd like us to talk about the program. But I know, you know, many of you have taken it and have had, obviously, positive feedback from residents about it, so I, I'm certainly happy to have the board lead this.
Well, I, I'd make a statement about our county college at Association of Counties, AOC, which is an introduction to the scope of, you know, what a county does and what is it to be a commissioner, because that's the AOC's version of this, then Deschutes County's version of it is, you know, what, what a county does for community members. Just to kind of put that, that context to it.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean-
I need to step out for a minute.
Yeah, okay, no problem. Uh, because, I mean, then what to expect is, could be the logistics of, of, you know, all the different, kind of listing all the nights, you know, like the schedule of what's coming, or, I don't know if that's, was that the intention of your two maybe?
I think in years past, we've talked just generally about what they have to look forward to in the coming class, and that they are going to get to go behind the scenes and learn about what we do and how we do it, just general statements about, and I think so whether that's-
That's a county administrator statement in there. Or future county administrator statement.
Okay, so we'd, I'll assign staff to kind of the what-to-expect section-
Yeah.
-and then with a handoff back to the board for the what-do-counties-do video.
I like the pictures, they're nice.
Good.
Which is that next one, is that the video?
Yeah, the, yep.
So that'll be really one slide with the go on the video.
Yep.
Okay. And then we go through everything.
And then following the video, we really kind of go into the breakdown of county services, and that follows the traditional grouping that you've had in previous year's presentations, and also a slide on services and partnerships, which kind of transitions us into the org chart and how things are laid out in terms of elected officials and departments, so.
Oh, you got to change Nancy's name.
Ah!
Oh, look at that.
See, this is, yeah, good catch.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Dyer.
Well, you could ask her to come back.
She is a fan of the program, but I, um-
So she said she wanted to take the class.
Yeah.
That's what she said.
This is on her bucket list, so.
Yeah, I'm like, oh, you got, you need a new bucket list.
Um, I'll go ahead and pause really quick, and unless Commissioner DeMone, you want me to keep kind of doing an overview, but do you want to kind of talk about, uh, who might take what within this section, or?
Are we looking at the board of commissioners, I mean, the, the org chart?
Yeah, and the county services and partnerships, or would you prefer to kind of do this on the fly night of?
Uh, I guess, I'm, now I'm lost, and which, which slide are we referring to? I, I maybe moved forward too many.
Um, I don't think we have, other than that staff is going to cover the what-to-expect in the program, I don't know that we've kind of-
Okay, yep, got it, yeah, so I just-
I think we do the rest.
Yes, definitely, and in whatever way you'd like to.
So, um, okay.
So, in the past, I think we divided this up, somebody could take Eric, and then one's five, one's six.
Well, so I'm looking back at the community services and services and partnership slides, the two of them, so I'm thinking, you know, Commissioner one, Commissioner two, and Commissioner three, on both of those slides, we can figure out which one, because we can all just say something about each one. This is introductory statements, the scope of what we do, we're listing them all off, we can say a few things about each item, but then this, and this isn't a half-hour discussion, it's just the, the high-level overview of the things that we do, so that was those two slides.
Right.
And then the org chart puts it in context of who's behind those services. Uh, it shows who's an elected official and who's a department head, or, yeah, I mean, the names are under electeds, and then there's other positions like the administrator and deputy administrator. Legal's in here somewhere. Where's Legal in here?
Yeah, where is Legal? Don't we have it anymore?
We, we keep Legal out of that. Unless we're known, the better. So we, so Legal's out of the org chart for now?
Yeah, the DA gets plenty of publicity, so you don't need the county lawyer getting it.
Well, we should have at least a bubble that points to something here.
Okay, we'll add Legal back in.
Well, I, uh, or, is it, but yeah, how do we reference it? I mean, is it, it's an internal legal service-
It looks better if we have Legal, then it's balanced.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll add that over to the left.
Probably tried to get it out of there.
As long as I can add Dave's photo, I-
Yep.
Yeah.
So then the next one is board of commissioners and this, the role of what we do. So you've set it up real nice for three bullet points again, and then, this will be the practice of three commissioners speaking too, because if, you know, like, for each bullet point, somebody could say something, and if you want to add before we go on, that would be us again, I mean, questions, good.
And then that's kind of the natural pivot point back to the section that's traditionally been admin, so I think historically, Tom and Eric have both provided feedback and comments, and then we also have David Givens scheduled to present on the internal audit function, and I'm prepared to talk about communications as well, so that would kind of round out. Um, Eric is also going to talk about risk, but round out the staff portion of the tail end of the presentation.
Great.
Okay, and I was wondering about the picture, the very last picture that you guys used-
Do you think they're really trying to ask a question at that point?
Question, class of 2018? I was like going, hmm, that's very interesting.
It's a good hand-raising question.
We can swap that photo.
I mean, it's very cute, but-
I was trying to display a wide breadth of county services, and Eric let me know, because I had a lot of really fun snow plowing pictures, that these were, perhaps were not the best fit for admin, but, you know, I'll swap this one.
It's a, it's a hand-raising picture, and you can definitely scrutinize it as a high school graduation, but-
Yep.
Aren't they waving at their son or something?
I love it.
They might be asking-
Or their daughter, I guess, I can't tell.
Well, they're trying to ask a question.
Okay.
You have to put under it pre-COVID, in case somebody can't read the 218.
Okay.
So a lot of these slides are, have three, three sections, three bullet points to them, we didn't select names, but it looks like, you know, there's about three or four of them where we'll all just take turns speaking, so we can touch base with either Whitney or Laura, or however we're going to get this landed for next week.
Yep.
And then, we might change the date next week?
It depends on if you would like to be outside or inside. If we'd like to be inside and make use of all three of the rooms, then I think we would need to look at a different night other than Tuesday, because this room will be in use, but we're also happy to do, uh, support an outside session, or look at, I believe, Commissioner DeMone, you might have a conflict one of those nights, it was potentially Monday, if my memory is serving me, so I think it was either, we might look at Wednesday of next week, or keep it on Tuesday and go outside.
And I support that, either Tuesday or Wednesday.
Tuesday's, Tuesday's better for me personally.
Yeah, so let's, yeah, let's commit to Tuesday outside.
Okay.
Unless that's really hard to do, but yeah, let's try that.
Yeah. Where would we do it outside?
We had talked about working, and I'm going to call Lee after we wrap up today, but working with facilities to block some of the parking area, and then asking for their staff's help in moving chairs, and also trying to set up a projector screen outside, as well as a speaker and microphone that can be used, so that participants can hear you. So those are kind of the elements that will go into supporting something like that.
Someday, someday there might be a better setup out at Worrell Park to do something like this, but, uh, that sounds great.
Yeah, the top of Worrell Park and the gravel up there.
I'm thinking-
I'll bring my-
Someday it might be built.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll aim for Tuesday outside.
Perfect. I, um, will circle back around on anything else, but I think that gives us great direction to move this forward, so thank you.
So we can only hope that it brings on rain or something-
Yes.
-that we need. Why, is Tennessee getting 16 inches in one day and we are getting three little drops?
Recently, I was thinking, we should all just start washing our cars more, because then we-
Exactly, I know, that's a really good idea.
Bring on rain, but you need water to do that, and it's, probably shouldn't do a lot of that either. Okay. Well, there we go, put direction to it. Anything else that was our last schedule or agenda item? Other items?
Uh, we were going to talk about the press release that was developed, having to do with the Citizens Committee on Cannabis, so there was a draft press release, and Whitney's prepared to talk to you about that.
Yes, commissioners, we had drafted a press release related to the recruitment for the new cannabis advisory panel, and there was a discussion or question about if hemp should be called out specifically within the press release as a topic area that the panel would discuss, and so I think Nick can speak to that probably more on a technical level, but I wanted to have a discussion with you about the draft press release before we finalized and issued it, and this change would potentially also impact the volunteer recruitment that HR is assisting with.
So, uh, my request to add hemp in there somehow, correct? I mean, that's what we're talking about here?
Correct, and I have a redline version of it.
That's fine. So, and it was kind of a generic ask of, could we or should we add the word hemp in there somewhere? Because I don't think I put it anywhere specifically.
I have mine.
And I, I raised the question of, if, if we specifically call out hemp, is that, are people going to think that we're inviting discussion about hemp, including, you know, that specifically the, the recent policy proposal to look at, um, you know, restricting which zones hemp can be grown in, which kind of seems like it's taking us away from, from talking about legal marijuana production, tax revenue, and what we're using those tax dollars for. So that was, I, I mean, my, my concern would be that, that, it's sort of like mission creep for that, for that panel.
Well, yeah, and-
But only if that's the way that people read it, I mean, if people said like, oh- But only if that's the way that people read it, I mean, if people said like, oh, well, this is where we're going to get to talk about hemp land use, because I, you know, as we all know, there is illegal marijuana production happening in hemp, you know, in hemp, you know, hemp farms or hemp growing facilities right now, and, you know, I certainly want us to, I, I want the county and all of our partner organizations to, you know, to be working very hard on cracking down on that. So I mean, that would be an argument to, to mention hemp somewhere in here, but, but my, my concern is just that it, it, people might see the word hemp and then go off into a bunch of hemp related things that, that, you know, don't have, you know, are not connected to legal marijuana production that generates tax revenue, and, you know, could in that way kind of, yeah, mission creep that.
So, yeah, so there's a different way we could go with this whole thing then. Hospital 3295. Maybe just, yeah, hmm, maybe just even get, just use less words. Like that whole second paragraph is, we're trying to explain it, but it, it's all going to come out anyways, I mean, it, so, so why I say that is, you know, if we, we use to put the word hemp in there or not, I spoke to Representative Zika recently about this and, because I said, you know, and you saw, I asked Kathleen Megan Coop about that too, you know, how do we use these terms, you know? It'll all come out anyways, it'll start to, that'll be the discussion, you know, so maybe we just back way off and not even say much.
But I mean, the, the, those, the other, the things that are in that second paragraph right now are taken directly from the legislation, I mean, those are three of the, three of the things that the, the panel was, um, that these panels are specifically established to do, so I, I kind of, in that sense, I think that they're good things to have in, in that second paragraph.
What about taking the second paragraph and putting it after the, with the passage of HB 3295, so moving things around, because it puts it in context of why are we even doing this? So think about it, there's residents out there, you know, there's, there's a different view, different views on this, and I know that the industry just wants to be accepted into the mainstream, accepted agricultural practices and in, in the banking and money systems and all that, I mean, I understand what the ask is.
But because of the requirements of the bill, adding and hemp, is that really a good legal step to take in the press release?
Yeah, we don't need to. I mean, I can, is a little discussion, I can see.
Doesn't that kind of muddy the water?
It broadens it.
Yep.
And I, I do like the, I do like your idea about saying with the passage of HB 3295, you know, having that as like the second paragraph, and then laying out the specific functions of the panel, you know, as specified in the, in the legislation, that, that flows nicely to me.
As I say, I mean, it was just an idea, I wasn't trying to, you know, just hemp, just referring to, well, and, you know, cannabis advisory panel, that's why clarification, so these are both a cannabis plant, right? So I mean, it's.
I mean, and we could, yeah, um, yeah.
Uh, and then as I say, I would almost lead to, is there a way to say something about the? I mean, to, with the passage of 3295 and the creation of the new cap, so. As I say, we were told we had, we were told to do this. We weren't asked, we were told, you know, so I'm just.
We want the revenue.
Yeah, well, yeah.
I can flip the 3295 paragraph up to the second paragraph position and then kind of tweak the start of the next sentence, I think, using some of the words that I, I heard from Commissioner Chang, but also kind of alluding to that this is a stipulation of the legislation in a soft way, and then I can, I'll send a revised draft to the board if you think that gets us there.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so then, yeah, is there anything else to add to that, because we just started down.
No, Commissioners, I think that's good, I think the only other thing, if you wish to say it anywhere, is you may just say, other cannabis related issues may be addressed by the committee, I mean, just if you want some, if you want to just keep that door open, just something very general.
Uh, I, I don't think we even need to say it, because it'll, it'll come up, I mean, soon as somebody sits down, they're going to be like, I got 10 things here, well, two of them are on topic and the rest are, you know, the rest of the world, which is fine. Yeah, so I don't think we need to say it in the press release.
I'll get you a revised version later today. Thank you.
Thank you. That was another item, I do have one thing that, remember the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Replica and Mobile Education Center, referred to as the Wall That Heals, is coming to Lepine on September 29th through October 3rd, so this is, you know, very respectful, you know, military honor to have this wall that heals come through our community, it was scheduled to be through last year, so it did slip a year and it's going to be here, so the community, Vietnam Veterans of America, Oregon's Band Brothers are just asking for people to understand it's happening, welcome to the community.
What was the October what day?
September 20, uh, 9th to October 3rd.
Okay, great.
And there'll be a.
Ceremony, some things?
Well, yeah, there'll be a welcoming ceremony that, the 28th at about 2:00 PM, I think that's when it's coming in, and then there'll be a flag ceremony twice a day, noon and 6:00 PM.
Okay.
And then October 3rd, closing ceremony at 1:30, so yeah, just, I'll have this on my wall or my door at the office, but just wanted everybody to know, and we helped fund it.
Yeah, no, I was sad when they, it, when they postponed last year.
Yeah.
For good reasons, yeah. A couple of other items, things I'll, I'll mention are, on Thursday, I attended the, they didn't call it graduation, but it was an achievement ceremony for the Heart of Oregon Corps, which was just a really neat event, and, um, yeah, they reviewed the activities and, and, you know, productivity of, of all those Heart of Oregon Corps youth, and one, one offshoot of that, that event was that Laura Handy, the executive director, grabbed me for a moment and said, you know, that, that wildfire bill, SB 762, included this whole program for, essentially, you know, fuels conservation cores, and she had a real keen interest in competing for those funds, you know, at the state level.
They'd be putting a crew together that would qualify.
To launch a program here, I mean, there's, there's, they already have youth who are doing a lot of those things, you know, one of the, one of the stories that they told during the, during the achievement ceremony was just about, you know, young people learning to use chainsaws, that's pretty much what you need to do to, to, to do fuels work, so just kind of flagging that as a, as a potential item of interest as the information about that program, state program comes available, we could be trying to position ourselves to get some of those resources here. So there's that, and then on, on Friday, um, the Central Oregon Irrigation District sponsored an event, Senator Merkley Keems were town and just popped in at a, a spot where they were staging a bunch of big pieces of eight and a half foot diameter steel pipe and, and talked a little bit about, he got to talk a little bit about the additional funds he was able to get into the infrastructure bill, the Senate infrastructure bill to, to support canal piping work.
Great, yeah, I think I saw some news coverage on that.
Yeah.
Anything else?
That's all I've got.
Commissioner Dare?
Well, I went to the prison Thursday morning, and I had a tour, you saw the news where the superintendent got arrested, so fortunately, I had a backup person to give me the tour, and half of Deer Ridge has always been empty with the exclusion of last year during the fires when they brought Coffee Creek over the inmates, and so they, it's an amazing facility, they have treatment room, they have a medical building, treatment rooms, medical clinic, oh my, hundreds of, hundreds of thousands of square feet that are empty, that are in excellent shape, the, the prison was built in 2007, so anyway, looking at it, it's a possibility, if we could do something in Oregon, bringing over mental health housing on our side of the mountain with this facility, there's the people, 60% of the inmates, minimum security in the part of the facility that it is used, you know, have a whole team and everyone there at least has to have a masters, the mental health workers have to have masters, that's, that's a major requirement, talked to a couple of them, but we walked through the entire, all the buildings, and it's the opportunity where we could actually have people go and get help, because listening to Dr. Will Berry the other day, four days is totally inadequate, knowing people that have 38-year-olds in their house that they can't leave alone because they need more help with mental health work, it just sounds like this might be something that could be done, and the facility is quite unbelievable, so that was, I was up there driving around, Commissioner Similac didn't think I probably got my tour, but I did somehow, because I asked somebody else, and yeah, another contact that I had, and yeah, it is, it's, you know, it's a relatively never used, brand new facility that is just like sitting there in a lovely location, quite nice in the hills there above Madras, so anyway.
Are there, are there people who are specifically proposing to, to use, reuse that, that portion of the building for a kind of, um, you know, hos, you know, kind of supplement to the state hospital or something like that, or?
I talked to Senator Thompson, and he said, work on your bill, I talked, I'm calling Gina Nichols to see what AOC thinks about it, but everyone that you talk about, we're, we're talking about doing like an RV park here, but that's like a Band-Aid at the end, so many people actually need, listening to the stories of the community, so many people need more mental health housing, according to Dr. Berry, he interned and worked in New York, and when you made a prescription for someone who had mental health issues to go somewhere for 30 days, no New York judge is going to disallow that, whereas in Oregon, you know, they get four days, my people that I knew, they had meds for their family member and then they couldn't even get them renewed, I mean, it was just unbelievable, you know, they got him some help, and yet it, where, where, where did it really happen, so it sounds like we really need more, um, we need to be able to work with people longer than four days, and truly, we have nothing over on this side of the mountain now, the prison in Pendleton originally was a mental health hospital, and it got converted the other way, and, you know, it just seems like, I was thinking, there was $130 million out there for mental health help in the state, but you know what, this building is already like, it could be ready to go without that much of a monetary, you know, change up due to it, because it's, it's already in great shape, it's got so many things that are needed, and it's in a lovely location, and it's on this side of the mountain, so anyway, just trying to put something together this year, and so.
So Senator Thompson from.
Good River.
Okay.
Yes, and I talked to Representative Zika about it, and he said, well, because House and Senate, but he said, yeah, definitely, he could be a sponsor of it, and then it would probably go to the Senate, but, you know, I haven't talked to the governor's office yet, currently, that building, that facility is used as an emergency spot, that's what happened last year, but the most amazing thing is no one had told them before last September that they were an emergency spot, so when I was there on Thursday, I said, oh my gosh, this place is impeccably clean, I couldn't believe how spotless it was, and they go, well, last year, we got caught, we didn't know, and they shipped over inmates, and they moved theirs to, I mean, they did a whole, you know, everybody was moving around because of the, all the fires, and they said, well, we keep it absolutely spotless now, so, but, well, would they need all of that, I think probably the housing was maybe up a thousand or something at one point in time, so there's definitely square footage there that is totally, it's a, it's a state asset that is not being utilized. So, and I just feel like, okay, clearly, there's a lot of people out there that desperately need help, and, you know, if we could just kind of change the MO in Oregon, actually, Dr. Berry said, it's really goes state by state, you know, every state has a different attitude how they want to treat their mentally ill with, you know, medical supervision and everything, and he really felt like New York really looked at it much more healthy than how we, he didn't, I'm not, this is not exact quote, how we take care of people here, but that's, that's what I heard him say, and I just, you know, I thought, wow, we really, we desperately need to do something, so when you, they even said the 60% of the inmates that are there now, they said, oh my gosh, if you could bring in some major, more help at the top end, that would even be great for those, those people that are the inmates, they would probably even have more, you know, expertise, and, you know, clearly helping people so they are, you know, not, in not such a desperate position.
Yeah, well, I mean, we hear, we hear from Janice and the behavioral health folks all the time about the need for mental health beds, so.
Right, I know, this, oh, it is just unbelievable, that it's just like, and I was thinking like, gosh, why would we want to have to build something, you know, like asking for like 13 million from the 130, when we already have this, and, you know, so I thought, well, I better drive up there and take a look, so it was really, I was really glad that I was able to do that, and I'm, I've got a couple more contacts with the prison system that I'm going to call, I just want to kind of give them a couple of days to clear out what happened last week to their system, with their leadership, but I do, I thank Trey for my tour.
Anything else? Seeing nothing else, meeting adjourned.
We can have one executive session.
Oh, yeah, okay.
You do?
That's Wednesday.
Well, that's Wednesday.
Yeah, that was.
I saw that for Wednesday, too.
I know, I was going to go like, Tom, really?
Meeting adjourned. Unless it's not.